Good afternoon, everyone. We're in the committee at home meeting of Tuesday, May 23rd. And, um, welcome to the traditional territory of the Smolish Nation. There is an agenda in front of council, the committee to adopt, the move by Council Spel, second by Council Prior. All those in favor, opposed, which carries. Uh, we've got lots of people in the room tonight, um, this tonight. Getting ahead of myself, this afternoon. And, uh, these are committee needs. They're meant to be very deliberative and exploratory. So if you do want to speak to it, just put your hand up and I'll recognize you. Uh, we welcome proponents to come to the table or anyone else would like to join us. Um, we do have a bit of a limited timeframe to deal with this topic. So I may try to make sure you're being concise and to the point. But besides that, uh, I will first pass it over to staff to outline what we're about to do.
Thank you Chair. I'd like to introduce Susan Stratus, who's a contract planner working for the district in reviewing this rezoning and OCP amendment application. And I'll turn it over to Susan.
Well, thank you. As you almost mentioned, my name is Susan Stratus. And I'll just walk you through an overview of the project. So our purpose today is to get an update on the proposed development. And there are three items we're looking for feedback from council on. Um, the first is the proposed community amenity contributions. Second is the use of the detailed assessment methodology in some of the riparian areas. And the third is some of the housing forms and whether that's considered to fit with the neighboring areas. So the property we're looking at, I'm sure you're familiar with, is the Garibaldi Springs Golf Course, forty-eight point three hectares, located east of Tantalus Road. And it's bounded by Doward Drive roughly to the north and Newport Ridge Drive to the south. The adjacent uses are the hotel itself, commercial and townhouse development on Tantalus Road, single unit development to the north and to the south. Uh, the application history, the applicants were here at the CDC meeting in June before they'd formally submitted to discuss the use of CAC contributions for parks and to discuss the use of the detailed assessment method in their project. They then went on to hold early public information meetings in June and July. And late in July, the OCP amendment application was submitted along with a geotechnical report. In August, the preliminary bio-inventory report was submitted. And then later in November, the rezoning itself was submitted. So since November, we've been reviewing a number of technical reports and there have been quite a few revisions to the project. So the environmental assessment based on the bio-inventory report has been underway. The district engaged a third-party reviewer to look at the environmental reports, essentially a peer review. It's a fairly large, complex body of information. The preliminary water and sanitary sewer system analysis was completed along with the preliminary geotechnical report. The preliminary flood hazard assessment was also submitted. And the traffic impact assessment has not yet been submitted. We had an early letter on the traffic impacts and had some discussion with staff and it's now going back to be completed. So looking at the project as a whole, there are five distinct neighborhoods. See if I can get the arrow going here. There we go, just continue that, thank you. So here is the hotel in the center, existing hotel. And the five neighborhoods basically begin near the hotel property with a phase, the first couple of phases in Lot A. At the lower part is a portion of the property that's proposed to stay in acreage use. It's not part of the current application for townhouses. And then moving up the strata road into Lot B, we have more townhomes. And Lot C, which is currently zoned RS1, is the final phase of development. So in total, there are four hundred and sixty-one multifamily units proposed. Majority of these are townhomes with the exception of here where there is apartments proposed fairly close to the hotel area. The guiding principle for this development was to locate the housing on disturbed parts of the site, which are mainly the fairways. Now, that isn't a hundred percent possible, but that is the basis of the design and why the areas are in the clusters they are. All of the environmentally sensitive natural areas, which are the pale green, are to be dedicated to the district as park. And the applicant is proposing that a portion, fifty percent, of the CACs be used for park construction. And I'll get into more detail on that in a minute. So just looking a bit closer at the south end. Part of the design is based on a reconfigured entrance, uh, south of the hotel. And this is a wider roadway that has a sidewalk on one side, a bike lane on the other, whereas right now it's a very narrow, um, kind of a lane structure. So that will be, um, essentially to allow the public to come in. There will be street-side parking for people who plan to use the park. The existing parking lot is made smaller because the road needs to run through what is the existing parking lot. The main parking lot for the hotel, which is up here, remains untouched. So just, um, the other big part of the project is the Newport Ridge Drive. Road dedication will be done by the applicants. There is a missing link here in that road dedication that belongs to this property. So the full road dedication won't be possible until such time as this property comes in for development. At the north end, it's primarily townhomes and this, again, is dictated largely by the grades on the site and trying to fit them in in a way that makes sense with the grades. So the, oh, the summary of land use here, I've circled the public road dedications. Public parks and trails account for almost sixty percent of the land use that will be dedicated to the district and the Newport Ridge Drive. So roughly sixty percent of the site goes into, um, public use. The remainder is in housing. So looking at the OCP context, this is what your OCP currently looks like for the neighborhood. The greenway corridors and recreation designation is applied to the habitat, the valuable habitat areas and the major streams that run through this property and surrounded by residential neighborhoods and the pockets of residential here where the existing development has taken That OCP designation is based on your environmentally sensitive areas mapping, which doesn't show too well on this map. But you can see just how large the complex array of high and medium value environmentally sensitive areas are, again, the site is in here. So it's part of a much bigger picture of environmentally sensitive lands. So the OCP amendment, we have not prepared bylaws yet. We needed to get to committee to get feedback on things. But it would, if it proceeds, it would redesignate approximately twenty hectares of the site as residential community and twenty-eight hectares would remain as greenway corridors and recreation. The development permit areas, there are two currently in place. DPA eleven for protection of riparian areas and commercial applies to the hotel site and the sites on Tantalus Road. We would be adding a third, the multifamily residential, DPA seven, to the, as part of the bylaw amendment. So the current zoning, the site is mainly CD twelve. There is an area that was, um, zoned RS1 at the north corner of the site here. And the CD twelve zone permits a variety of uses. And I'll just on the next slide show you the original zoning as it looked. I know this is hard to read. This was, um, done in nineteen ninety-three before digital technology came along. So this is, uh, north is facing up on this. The hotel is here and I'll just, um, this would be the golf course and Tantalus Road was dedicated as part of this entire configuration. And just looking a bit closer at that. The hotel site is here and the areas that are shown crosshatched as G are the habitat protection areas that were designated as part of this whole complex of development and the golf course. They were obviously the same kind of trade-offs as we're looking at today with habitat protection areas. Now, these Lot Gs are actually owned by the district and it gets kind of lost in the, in the mix whenever it's in a CD twelve zone. So as part of the zoning, we plan to rezone the large park area in the center plus pick up these Lot Gs and put them all in a P three zone so they don't get forgotten as public land. So on either side of the hotel site, Lot C and D are the multifamily developments, the townhouse developments that are in place. And Lots E and F on either side are the mixed use, commercial with multifamily mix that are located on Tantalus Road. I've just said all that, so I'll skip through that. And that map just shows you in green, it's not very clear unfortunately, but this is the hotel site. This is the clubhouse parking area. And the areas shown in green are the lands the district owns that we plan to rezone as P three. Let's go through. So the idea with the zoning is to keep the CD twelve zone on the existing townhouses, the existing commercial sites and the hotel parcels. Those are still fit, so we just keep that zone. As mentioned, we'd rezone the habitat protection park areas as P three. And the new housing parcels, the five parcels within the golf course site, we would put a new RN four zone that would be a better fit than your existing RN zones. And I think, I guess, just trying to move away from CD zones and naming them what they actually are, which is multifamily. So we'd put a new multifamily zone post there that fits the configuration. The flood hazard assessment, um, it's a conditional densification area in your flood management plan. And the idea is to meet the flood construction level through a combination of fill roughly half a meter to one meter above existing grades, again, just on the development part of the sites. And again, through lot grading and building design, we'll achieve that flood construction level. The detailed final report is in process. Oh, what happened here? Roads and servicing. The water, sanitary and storm will be, you'll be serviced by extension to the existing municipal systems. Oh, okay. It's a fairly straightforward property to service because your municipal services exist all around the site on three sides. Access will be provided in three places, starting with the hotel entry road, through Doward Drive, there's an extension moving from Doward South, and through Newport Ridge Drive when that is ultimately dedicated. The internal strata roads are typical ten-meter-long strata roads, which is what's required under the building code and by the fire department. We're looking at whether this might be an opportunity to use advisory lanes. I think this notion came up in the Chikai project with their strata roads where instead of marking two lanes of traffic, you mark a single lane of traffic and you mark the bike routes, bike pedestrian on either side with a very slow speed limit. And basically people learn to, um, move around each other European style. But again, this only works in a very slow traffic situation. The traffic impact assessment that is coming in is going to be looking at options for access to Highway ninety-nine. During the early public consultation, that was certainly an issue with the neighborhood, the fact that they can't easily get onto the highway. There's a need for another access. And of course, the Ministry of Transportation position is there should be no more access points to the highway. So we're looking at whether some compromises are possible in that study and just what they might look like. I hope that will be in soon. This is a close-up of the, the top photo shows the, um, shows the existing situation with the, there's kind of a landscape green. This is the entrance road and a fairly large parking area here. And it goes off at a bit of a funny angle into the parking lot up here. Under the new configuration, the road needs to be made wider and there's limited opportunity to do this because of the riparian areas surrounding it. So the road. This has the magic touch. The mo, the road will wind down a bit further to the south, essentially going through what is now this parking lot and make a circle around. So that means a smaller parking lot here, um, street parking along this access road here. And there will be additional parking at the south part of the site off Newport Ridge Drive, again, to give public parking, assuming there will be a fair amount of public use of the trails in this park system. So on to the community amenity contributions. The four hundred and sixty-one units generate three point five million in CACs under your current interim policy. As well as that, the applicant's proposing to dedicate twenty-eight hectares of park. They're also proposing to construct twenty-three affordable housing units, which is five percent of the total, and doing that in phase one of the development after a certain amount of negotiation. They're also proposing to do three point two million in park improvements and doing that in phase, phase one of the development. I think it's fairly important from their point of view to provide the district with a finished park rather than something that might be done later. So they're proposing to spend that money. Now, the three point five million in CAC dedications covers only co, part of the cost of the affordable housing and part of the cost of that park construction. And they're proposing a fifty-fifty split in those CACs, which is not exactly what your policy calls for, which would normally be closer to a sixty-five percent of affordable housing. But they are proposing to fully fund twenty-three affordable housing units. So essentially they're exceeding your, um, CAC policy. I don't realize these maps don't show too well at this scale, but the proposed park and trail network, again, is meant to be in the first phase. The focal point is the entry near the hotel where there's going to be a hub feature that includes both active and passive play areas. Further off to the east, there will, there is proposed to be a pump track. The main multi-use path is running north-south and is built on the, I cannot master nothing. Can you show, yes, show the, that's the main trail that goes up and then it merges into the strata areas. And we're working with the developer to make sure there is provision for sidewalks or a trail system through the strata developments. So there's continuity right up to Doward Road, again, to make sure people in the surrounding area can access the, access the park system. And that's just a close-up of what those looped trails look like through the development. There is a fair bit of the land that does not have trails proposed and this is that balance between environmental protection and recreation. There are parts where the environmental values are extremely high. You don't want to introduce people walking through trails. And that's the southern area with the hub park showing a bit better and the main loop trail that goes basically a loop up back to the hotel area. So the environmental issues are very significant on the site. It's a very complex site. The preliminary bio-inventory detailed, all of the water courses, wetlands, ponds, forested areas, and habitat for species at risk, including, um, critical habitat for the Pacific watershed, which may occur within some of the riparian areas. And all of the fish, all of the water courses are considered fish-bearing. So the site principles that were used to come up with a site development plan is to locate development in previously disturbed areas, mainly from golf course use. The detailed assessment methodology under the riparian area regulation was used only in the disturbed areas and there, a fifteen-meter minimum setback applied in some of the areas and it goes up to twenty-four point six meters for Megan Creek. The undisturbed habitat areas are based on a simple assessment methodology, which is just an outright thirty-meter minimum setback. So the second principle was to retain large contiguous conservation areas and prevent fragmentation, which is really important for a lot of species to have as large an area as possible. And to minimize foot and parent tough trails and roadways through the conservation areas. So the environmental review, as I mentioned, consisted of the bio-inventory report and that follow-up report called the Habitat Balance Model, which showed the before and after situations of the habitat, the amount of habitat. The district engaged a peer reviewer to look at both of, both the methodology, the recommendations, and that habitat balance. The peer review did identify, um, a number of deficiencies, which were not considered major, but they are being corrected. And did conclude that the habitat budget is founded on riparian area regulation principles and calculated importance with your DP eleven guidelines. Concluded that the report is a reasoned and comprehensive work and that the habitat budget recommendation is comprehensive and reasonable. And just looking, um, in the before and after scenarios, I won't get into these in detail, we're just looking at the broad numbers, but pre-development current conditions, you've got twenty-six point seven-five hectares of protected habitat and post-development under the new development scheme, that increases slightly to thirty-one hectares. So moving on to public input to date, um, there were the early open houses held by the applicants last summer. There were a number of positive comments submitted. Again, people were looking forward to improve trail systems and park access primarily. There were concerns about the loss of habitat and the, just the basic change from what is currently a golf course or had been a golf course. And a lot of comments about traffic concerns. We've since received additional submissions to the development showcase and again, concern regarding possible change to your OCP and building on environmentally sensitive lands. There is, um, an area particularly in the north that's concerned about impacts on their views and the proximity of multifamily housing to single-family. So we have not resolved all of those issues fully. There is a next open house coming on June seventh, proposed by the applicants and we'll probably hear more about these issues at that meeting. So I mentioned the neighborhood concerns and the area, I guess, most under concern is this Lot C where you've got single family, some are vacant, but some, many are built, single-family homes here and single-family homes below this proposed Lot C. And townhomes are proposed here. The applicants have made a number of changes. They've reoriented these townhomes so that the ends are facing the single family rather than kind of going across sideways where there'd be kind of a wall of, of townhomes. They've also proposed to increase the building setbacks to be, um, greater than what is required under the RS1 zone. So if this developed as an RS1 zone, the rear setback would be seven point six meters. They've proposed to increase that to nine point one five. And they've also proposed to reduce the building heights here to nine meters, which is the same as the RS1 zone, or as the typical townhouse height is.
Over ten.
Over ten. So our next steps are the public information meeting on June seventh and then depending on what we hear from the committee today to bring bylaws forward, the recent zoning for your typical first and second reading. And again, land development will be required to secure all of the public commitments here. So get, just to recap, what we're looking for input on is the use of the detailed riparian assessment methodology for part of the site, the proposed CAC contributions, split fifty-fifty for parks and affordable housing, and the higher density housing at the north end of the site, whether you've got any thoughts on that. That's it.
Thank you. Can I pass the rezoning list over?
Thank you. Could you go back to the slide that was the nineteen ninety-three?
Yep.
So the G areas are habitat protection, but the golf course area, um, is there any habitat issues with the golf course area? Was it mentioned on the zoning?
No, the zoning just kind of gave green light to golf course use and a couple of other uses, recreational activity. It was fairly broad. It included golf course, but it didn't, um, put aside any lands for environmental protection. And I believe when the environmental assessment was done, that was part of the findings was that the golf course itself is caused and has caused quite a bit of deterioration of the riparian areas on the site. So I think, and again, this is just guessing what happened at the time, I think these areas were meant to be compensation. And oddly enough, the permitted uses for these Lot Gs, it is called habitat protection, but it also allows up to nine hundred parking spaces for mini golf.
Seriously?
I don't, yeah, I don't know why that is. It's just one of those little quirks that we thought we'd change when we have the chance. So I, you know, I, there's not a great deal of information in that zoning bylaw about why, or in the staff reports that I was, um, able to find that went with this. But I believe that was the trade-off was these compensation areas were meant to compensate for, you know, both what's happening on the perimeter of the site here because there are valuable areas right along the perimeter, plus on the golf course itself.
And the second question was, um, the OCP amendment that's being applied for, you said was approximately twenty hectares of the site. Can you point out where those are? Are they, is it one area or is it several areas?
It is actually applying to the whole property, the OCP amendment application. It's just that the outcome will be a bylaw that reshapes it into two. It'll have development areas called residential neighborhood and it'll have an area called Green Space. What do we call, what is it called again?
Uh, the P three?
No, the OCP. Actually, let me just go back to an earlier map. It'll show it there. So if this proceeds, um, what would happen? These two yellow pockets here are the, conceptually, the developments that are located on Tantalus Road. And the golf course is in this, Greenway Corridors and Recreation. So we would be adding five more pockets of yellow in the midst of the Greenway Corridors and Recreation. So there'd be some new residential neighborhoods and the rest would remain Greenway Corridors and Recreation. And it's roughly a sixty, forty, sixty percent would be Greenway Corridors and Recreation, forty percent housing. It, it will look a bit odd because there will be these little bubbles in the middle of green.
So question for staff, Susan. Thank you. Originally, when all that density was proposed on Tantalus Road, the Greenway Corridors, was that not put into the OCP as trading off, as a trade-off for the density of the hotel? And it had to be, had to remain permeable, green corridors or recreation?
I think the, uh, the last time when the OCP changed, uh, and that was in the early two thousands when the golf course, originally this area here in the middle was Greenway, was designated Greenways. That was the previous designation. Uh, the, the northern part as well as the southern part were designated as residential in the OCP. And I think when the golf course wanted to expand in the early two thousands, it was re-designated to Greenway Corridors to accommodate the golf course expansion.
To accommodate the golf course expansion?
Yes. That was before the housing proposals came into place because the, the south and the north areas were originally designated as residential neighborhoods.
And so I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to, so when this, when the golf course proposal came in the mid nineties, it was rezoned for the CD twelve.
Yes.
Correct. But prior to that, portions of this were, I'm just trying to understand, and I think I'm just trying I'm just trying to drill down on maybe answering Councilor Chappell's question in one way, because I'm not, I'm not sure you got me there.
So I think originally, the golf course was smaller. It was contained in this area. And then there were some plans to expand the golf course use in the late 90s, early 2000s, to the north, which was originally designated as residential neighborhoods.
So was it originally a nine-hole golf course that expanded to an 18-hole golf course?
I'm not sure how many holes they had, but that's potentially...
I don't remember that, but that's, okay. Did they ever, was, did they ever run as an nine-hole golf course?
I don't know.
Oh, so immediately it was... Okay, Council, any questions for clarification purposes?
The road that goes through the middle is Strata Road. Is that required? And the reason I'm asking is about the principles of maintaining undisturbed open space. So if there's access from Doward Drive and access from Tantalus Road, what do we need that internal strategy?
To provide more than one point of access. It's just a safety concern, how many units do you want to have based on a single point of access. This is a fairly steep access point here. This is an existing disturbed cart path here, so it's already a disturbed habitat. And I guess just neighborhood design, safety, it's good to have more than one point of access to a neighborhood and to allow people to move. This will eventually be a third point of access, but that can't happen until this area develops beyond. So it's really just a lot of units to have one, a single pointed access.
Is it required, or is it just a nice...
For our fire protection purposes, it is a, it's a requirement, but it also is for connectivity for pedestrians and cyclists, and also the fact that it's on an existing carpetet. So it wouldn't be creating a new road. It's really improving on the path that exists there now.
Have we calculated transit access for this development?
We did. We did send early referrals out to Basic Transit, it's one of the few agencies that always responds to their referrals. And anytime there's additional density, they see it as an opportunity for supporting the transit system, and that would be on Tantalus Road, but, you know, they really just make general comments like that. They like to see more density, period, and that always supports what they're doing. But at this level of resolving, they don't get into looking at where bus stops might be and type of thing, that's just premature.
So just, can I just build on what Councilor was saying, on the piece of road that goes basically from the hotel site up to lot B?
Yeah.
We needed a fire access. Can we not make it emergency access only and pedestrian and cyclist, so there's no through traffic?
That's definitely an option.
Okay. I think that's your Councilor, Councilor...
Thank you. Well, the environmental part, I can kind of figure that out, so that's, that's good. Is there any topographical information on this? I mean, I didn't see any.
Uh, yes.
Is that coming, or...
I didn't think to bring that on the slides, just because it's almost unreadable at the scale I'd be showing you, but everything that's here is based on detailed topographic information that's on servicing plans.
But I think, are you looking specifically at lot C?
Well, you know, yes, you know, we're getting people questioning some of the views and things like that. Definitely need to see cubed, so that you can kind of see what's happening up there, because even when you drive up and look around, it's still a little bit hard to...
I may just defer to the applicants. When we looked at, when we were hearing from residents in lot C, they did, let's see if I can find it, they did go on site and do some detailed survey work to, get to it any minute here. These are sections that they took through the site, those little lines, and they actually met on site with a number of people there.
Oh, I didn't see those sections.
Yeah, well, I haven't blown them up. I believe the applicants may have brought some information with them to show you more closely what those look like. You know, there is detailed topographic work. I have brought that to this meeting.
It's not an easy site, is it?
It's a really tricky site, and you can see from the houses that have developed there.
Well, yeah, we had, in our planning department, we had an exercise the other day on Cleveland Avenue, looking at heights. And so in that, it was a combination of cubing up the development to show a shading and things like that. That was really helpful.
Yeah.
I don't know, that might be nice here.
You know, we're at an early stage in the OCP.
I'm not sure shading will make a difference, because it's...
But the developers do have some information that they can add to that discussion for you. We'll get them to come up in a minute.
And then the, on the park design, playgrounds, I don't really see a lot of information on the park, but I guess a lot of it's going to be done in the first phase, that's the plan.
We do have a lot of information on the park. We've got detailed plans, and we've got a detailed costing list that the staff are going through to, you know, we want to see where that three, whatever million it is, is being spent, and whether those are realistic numbers. So we do have a lot more detail than I've shown you in this.
Yeah, well, you know, I mean, that's, the park, the reason that this development is interesting is because of that.
Yeah.
Okay, well, it's, it's immediate now.
Thank you. Can you go back to the previous slide?
The other direction?
The one, no, where you have the entire development. CD, D Lot in particular. I was interested in knowing where the affordable housing is going to be.
Okay, I'll just, yeah, let's go back toward the beginning.
Is that, is the affordable housing all goes for lot D?
Yes.
So that is all in one place?
Yes, yes, and that is a challenge. I know that has come up with other projects, and the problem with dispersing it is the management structure. You know, if the district is going to own, or sorry, is going to be the manager of this affordable housing, you know, the idea with affordable housing is it's...
We're not, we want to make sure how it is integrated. We are going to deal with the management side of things, because it's important to integrate. Exactly.
If I may, just to add to that, the affordable housing is going to be located, mixed in with market rental housing. So it's not all of that lot D is affordable housing, it's going to be market rental and then non-market.
And it's a rental building, is that...
It's partially rental. You know, the problem with the affordable housing is it's not affordable to put your affordable housing in a townhouse structure, they're just too expensive, so it ends up going in your apartment structures. And in this development, there is only one of them. And I guess part of the other message we've been giving to the applicants is to try and build it sooner rather than later, and as it gets dispersed through a development, you lose some of that sooner part, because if you want it built upfront, that does land itself to going into a single location. And if it's going to be dispersed, you're going to get, you know, it's going to be phased. So it's a challenge to, I understand the reasons for dispersal, kind of the social reasons you would want to do that, it's just harder to, harder to actually do.
Did the applicant look at anything, did the applicant look at anything else other than just the rest of the board?
Initially, there were some single family homes in this proposal, but we've encouraged the applicants to densify to a more affordable housing form.
Or will it be a million, or a million?
Two million.
Well, just to follow on that, I thought there was still in the report, single family homes up the southern portion somewhere?
Uh, no.
Or maybe it was keeping RS1s.
I think that's referring to the adjacent, single family. I'll be resistant to any single family on here.
Okay, and so then my question actually was, what is the RM for? Why are we using a new designation because it's all accountable?
It doesn't, well, it's a mix of townhomes and apartments, and the density doesn't fit exactly your existing RM zone. So rather than create, typically when you've got something that's not fit in your existing zone, you create a CD zone, that's the normal practice. We could do that, we could create a new CD zone. It's just, I find there's benefit to having your zoning now tell the story of what's there. So if it's got an RM zone, you know it's multifamily housing, and your existing three multifamily zones don't fit this project, they're actually denser than what is being proposed.
So if we're creating a new zone, would there not be opportunity then to look at more of the missing middle housing form than just townhomes and apartments? Like especially up here in Skyridge Development, where we have single families surrounding lot C, seems to me there's an opportunity to put duplexes there, or fourplexes, or just various housing forms that aren't just woes of townhomes and might complement what's surrounding it versus... Just that, so if we're creating a new zone, why wouldn't we get more creative and not less? And we're doing the same thing we're doing all over town, just putting us townhomes, and I think...
There are.
This lot sort of lends itself, different portions of this lot lend itself to more creative takes on what...
There are actually a number of duplex units in here. I didn't elaborate on that, but it's partly because of the grades, I don't know if I can zoom in on that.
It's, it's right in there.
Yeah, all through, there's different places where, because of the difference in the grade changes all through the property, they actually can't get a footprint very well for townhomes, like for elongated group of townhomes. So when we say townhomes, your zoning bylaw includes townhomes, but then there are duplexes within that definition. It allows for clusters of two or more. So by definition, townhomes already do include duplex, and on this site, there are quite a few of them actually, just because of the drawing it lends itself. So in that lot B, there's quite a few duplex units in there.
In lot C?
There's a few up toward the end, adjacent to the single family, there's, and on the other one, there's a couple. But that's definitely feedback, you know, that we can give to the applicants, that, you know, if that's going to be a better fit.
And then in terms of connectivity to existing trail systems, recreational trail systems?
The parks map does identify, to the east, there's a lot of well-used regional trails that are heavily used, and the trails have all been designed to link to those, so there is good linkage to those regional trails. That part is in good shape. One of our maps might show that. Doesn't show it too well, but...
I think I'll go to the next one.
Yeah, that does show some of the trails linking up, mainly to the east where the properties are, the trails are.
So as an OCP level, we don't necessarily give it that fine grain, but I think that's what I'm trying to make, but that is always a community priority.
The landscape architect has been working on that from the start. It's always been one of the premises of this development, is that need to link to. And I think they worked with SARCA early in that process, during those early open houses, to find out how the area is used. So I believe that is taken care of in the details.
Thank you. It was about 2010, my first term on council, we rezoned that little triangle in the upper of Rayan Quarter, the northeast quarter of the property, to, I think it was a bareland strata, if I recall correctly, 15 lots or something like that. And one of the conditions of that rezoning was the payment of a $400,000 cash amended contribution, not at the outset, but there was some trigger point later on. I don't just recall what it was, maybe subdivision, something like that. But that, that's not included in the 3.5 million, I take it?
We're just starting new under your policy. I guess that didn't proceed as a subdivision, and so it just elapsed the...
You put it was a condition of rezoning, it was payable on...
Part of the rezoning.
So it's still...
So the way we've, the way we've treated it is that we peeled back that zoning that happened, and calculated the CC contributions as if that zoning never happened, because the money never exchanged, hence the subdivision never happened essentially. So we, in a way, we've just applied our new policy to the whole site, as if it was never zoned to for RS1.
But just to put that in, and given the context, under our current CAC, if it was 15 single family lots, that'd be $150,000. This was $400,000 in and of itself, so it wouldn't fit into the firm that we have now. This was something developed that they offered, and it was a couple moments ago, wasn't it?
That's right.
So is apples and oranges a little bit?
It is a little bit. On the other hand, the proposed CAC contribution exceeds what the target is according to our current policy because of the park improvement costs as well as the affordable housing cost. So we could, we could reapply that lens of adding the 400, I think it was 460,000, to the current CAC target, but it might not change much in terms of the deliverables.
Any other questions for clarification purposes, staff?
This may be a moot point, I was a property purchase with the expectation of that zoning in place without the payment of the $40,000. So where is the expectation?
Maybe it isn't that.
Yeah, it really doesn't, or isn't. But I'm just thinking, if it changes cost structure, how much density has we put in, or could, based on participative land, based on previous zonings? Because if you had a piece of land that was previously zoned, why would you not expect that, why would you expect that zoning to change if Council's already voted to approve single family zoning for that, for that lot? Is it, is it possible to repeal zoning when it's been a decision of Council, or is that something that...
We can change that, but not anymore.
Yeah, we can, but it has to come back for discussion.
So for example, hypothetically, if Council determined to keep that RS, like not put that piece of the zoning, it would just be as-is if it was developed? CAC would be due, the zoning would be RS1 as it is now?
That's right, we do a subdivision in the CAC.
And the overall CACs would be less, because, you know, we wouldn't be getting those multifamily ones, so we'd have to do the math there to bring that comparison back for you.
Yeah, we understand.
Counsel, any other questions for clarification purposes? Don't see any. I have a question, and this was always actually my, probably my biggest issue with the previous development proposal that was supposed, I guess, five, six years ago now, is a Newport Ridge Drive road allocation, and I was always annoyed that we shouldn't be putting a road there, that if we are going to tie the Highlands back down, we'll do it eventually through the Chimalands and down Skyridge, or down some other path that way, that this was a completely unnecessary, highly environmentally sensitive bench, and we just add another scar on that road. So I'm curious of what the reasoning is, so how it's in there.
I think it was always in our, from my understanding, it was in our long-term transportation plans to connect the Pia Crescent and J Crescent through this area because of the development that's just, the lands that are slated for development above that are zoned for residential and designated for residential. And I think the Newport Ridge Drive was initially designed as a major collector, so it's a 25-meter road right away. It has, on the other side of Tant... It has, on the other side of Tantils Road, it has a road right away that connects it to the highway. So there was always that link to channel traffic from the Highlands through this area. It's, as that area grows, it probably would benefit from more than one connection. But this, this is seen as an opportunity not only to provide vehicle traffic, but also to provide acceptable kind of grading for bike and pedestrian traffic. So it would be a lesser grade than what we've got right now.
Yeah, and Newport was designed well before anything was developed, the golf course, any of the Skyridge development. And certainly that was thirty years ago, so.
Yes.
I'm not sure how necessary it is today. I think just looking at the Skyridge, I mean, I know in twenty years it might green up and stuff, but it's seeing another scar like that up and through up, I think it's pretty unnecessary. And it's always been about meter creek, insensitivity of that habitat and that go up and the runoff into that habitat that's been a concern. So I mean, that road dedication is always a challenge for councilors.
Thank you. And on that point, excuse me, again, in my first term, we rezoned a piece of property on the other side of the red line, just down in that corner, for I think it was 48 small lots. And part of that rezoning was to allow Newport to curl around and more or less follow the yellow line of the red and then head up into the Highlands. That turned out to be a non-starter with DFO, we were told for riparian reasons, for habitat reasons. But I wonder, well, two things. One is, you know, we're contemplating development down here. The reason we were told that that 48-lot subdivision didn't go ahead was because the place was in festival shoes or something. I can't remember exactly what it was, but there was, there was habitat issues which I would have to think wouldn't just be confined. They would cross the red line and they'd be all over that area. But do you have any idea about that? And the second thing is, do we know that this present configuration of possibly an extension of Newport Drive would actually meet DFO standards? Would raise some of the same issues?
I don't know if the environmental assessment is.
Yes, well, they, their environmental assessment looked at that road and looked at the previous road. They described it around the perimeter of the bulk because they hadn't been told from the start that they needed to provide connection through. So there are impacts. The road that's shown has less impact than the one that went around the circle did. But that is part of the environmental assessment that they've done and part of the habitat balance. That's in part why the lower area is being left. Some of their habitat compensation is there. So the road dedication does generate habitat compensation requirements, which are part of this package. And yes, you know, it would be nice if a road isn't needed there, but we have, I guess, advised them that as part of the road network, they have to find a way through. So that's part of the environmental assessment that's been done. And there's bridges needed to clear the streams and it's a fairly expensive piece of infrastructure. Now, that road is not going to be built as part of this development. If the road is being dedicated only and the construction requirements for that road will fall to the lands beyond if it's needed. So all that we're getting at this point is the road dedication, but they have, the engineers and their environmental people have looked at the habitat repercussions of that road.
Yeah, the piece I described was owned, at least at the time, by developer Thunder Creek, yeah, Thunder Creek, that development. So it was intended as an access up to there and I assume they would have had to fund it at some point in the second phase or the next phase. So that would be the intent is to.
Yes.
The development council race is talking about is not dead in the water. It's still up there, isn't it?
There's no active application on that.
So that subdivision down on the bottoms.
It's been closed. The file's been closed. It's not going ahead.
It's rezoned. I believe it's rezoned. I think it was just subdivision had the issue.
Yes, I think you're right. So there was, there was evidence of true, of Pacific watershed in that area. And I think the owners of the property are still pursuing the, is there a solution to developing in that area with DFO?
Yeah, so they're still working on it.
Yes. The application is not, they'll need to make any application in order to advance it.
If you go to the middle section, I think they're calling it Lot D, and Hotel, what kind of conversations have you had with the hotel management? Not necessarily the ownership group, but the owner. I understand the impact on the commercial tourism business.
I would defer that question to the applicants we have met with the hotel owners. And I know the applicants have been, met with them numerous times and they're aware of the project and the plans. And I guess my, the latest entry, it's of course a strata ownership structure, so there's a lot of strata owners involved in the hotel.
Well, I suspect the strata owners are, have a very different opinion than the hotel managers and the restaurant managers.
I have not spoken directly and I don't know whether the applicants can give you more information on that. I think the restaurant just recently changed hands.
Counsel, any other questions? I do want to allow the applicant to come up and answer the questions that haven't been answered. And if you'd like to add some comments, anyone in the audience, just put your hand up. Right at the tables.
Just pull, pull them up, Charlie.
Good afternoon. I'm Kevin Schubaker with Polygon Homes. And Bruce Hemmstock is the landscape architect for the master plan. And we've got our entire team here, so there were some questions that I thought could be answered by someone who's behind me as well as our president, our SVP. So I've got a presentation which I'll very much edit because Susan's covered everything. And I'll just try and highlight the things that were asked and I've got to figure out how to get to it here, so. Hit us on this one here.
No, just hit us.
I got to open it anyway, right?
Yes.
So as I mentioned, I'll just spin through a bunch of stuff that's already been covered here. Susan touched on it, but the basic premise is that we are starting with the environmental riparian areas. There's been a lot of field work, a lot of surveying, a lot of topography, and we've established that quite clearly now. And then we work backwards from that, so the disturbed areas are really the only areas that we can work in other than the exception of the road and a few areas to make connections. That's yielded, now just to be confusing, we call it three neighborhoods instead of five, but there's three main neighborhoods. And we're planning on starting in neighborhood number one and then work our way up. It's about a seven-year build-out and it depends on the market, so that's our timeline as we estimate it right now. This map, I think, more clearly shows the park dedication. The dark green is the park area. Then we'll be coming over to the district and rezone P3. The remaining areas are either not going to be developed and not knowing what we're doing yet or there's the housing areas. Susan covered this already. This is the pre-development riparian map. The orange areas are the potentially developable areas, fairways, disturbed areas. I will get into this diagram, but this was a way of describing really quickly to people how the detailed approach works. Basically, it allows us to, where there's a fairway that's inside of 30 meters, that area can be developed as long as much more, you know, to a ratio outside of it is protected. And that's why we end up with a, overall, there's a net gain in riparian habitat of 12,000 square meters. There's a net gain in the more important aquatic habitat of 4,700 square meters. And in addition to the gain in area, Mike Nelson and his group have gone out and there's areas where culverts have to be opened, streams have to be connected to existing streams. There's a lot of work that needs to be done to make it function. There's the area and then there's the functionality of the habitat, which will help enhance it greatly. This was already mentioned, in addition to the two public information meetings that we had, we've met with a number of groups. We've met with both the hotel management on numerous occasions as well as the strata council and strata members. And as well, we've met individually and in groups with the neighbors, Sorka's, Dreamkeepers. There's been quite a, we started on this project in February of last year when we struck a deal for the land and we've been working on it ever since. So as to the neighbors, I won't talk too much about Megan Creek or the townhomes to the south. We've been working with them. They have issues around, right now, there may be other things I'm not aware of, but the main concern for them is hazard trees. The area's been neglected. We've worked with the district, the environmental person at the district and the strata and our arborists and their arborists. And now we're removing hazard trees. And Megan Creek Estates, the main concern was in the earlier plans, there was a road that was going to the north of their site between the pond, close to the townhomes. And then there's also the area in front of them, which will be park area if everything is able to proceed. And through the ongoing process of planning, we'll work with them and the district to decide what that is. If it's, you know, a no-go zone or flooded or what it'll be. So in particular, the interface is the most contentious right now, or has the most conversations, is this area up at the north end, will be called Neighborhood 3. So to answer a question about grades, whatnot, hopefully this will do that. There's three, sorry, there's four main zones, A, B, C, and D. And that shaded red area is the currently zoned RS1 site, just below A there, if you can see that. So this is A. So A, to the left, there's a home or a shaded red building. We don't know what the designs for the homes are, so we have to just go on the zoning envelope. So that's a home that can be built there. That's their setback. And then our townhomes. So there's two benches on that lot up there. The red area, the RS1 zone site is a higher bench and the remainder of the site is that a lower bench. So you can see that the yellow and the blue building are at the higher bench in front of the home and then that other blue building are the townhomes below. And that black line is the section cut. So Susan mentioned this already, but in meeting with the neighbors, and there's different ideas about what we could do. But right now, we're proposing to do single-family building height on the building, our townhomes in that area. Use the more older, rear yard setback of the multifamily RM2. And then one of the residents mentioned, you know, if we look at restricting the tree height, so we would have a zone, that whole back area, we planted with trees similar to what you put under Hydro right away. So nothing would ever grow up in the long term and that could be guided under the bylaws of the strata. And then we would look at roof design, both for minimizing and for having something that has a pleasant outlook or something better than a flat roof or something else. This is the second zone. This is Interface B. So in this area, there's the red house again, and the grade drops off significantly. And then our townhomes are on the lower bench. We took a section through the middle of those lots, so it varies. It gets a little worse as you go west, a little better as you go east. But this is an idea of what's going on, so again, I don't know how those designs and those grades on those single-family lots have been manipulated, but this is what we have from the surveyors and this is the condition. So in this area, we'd be looking at the planting restrictions and the roof design. This is Interface C, so this is at the bottom end, where we're again coming close to grade with the single-family lots. And in this zone, we're looking at maximizing, increasing the setback to 15 meters, two-story homes. And again, the planting restrictions and the roof design. And then the fourth condition are the homes that are existing and established, single-family neighborhood below us. So ours are the yellow and blue buildings proposed and then the homes below. And the discussions we've had with some of the owners down there, one of the ideas we've landed on is that there's a no-go zone, an area that we planted with material and fenced off that nobody can get into where that red box is and distant from the L home. The idea is, is that someone can't stand, a townhome owner can't stand at the edge of the bank and look down into the yards, that they'd be sufficiently far back that they're looking over. So that, the detail of that would have to be worked out, but that's the working idea. So just quickly go through this. So I'm fortunate, I get to work, we get to work on a number of master plans and as we do each one, we sort of get, we learn a little bit and we can take new ideas to new sites. This site's unique. It has its own characteristics, but there are a few things that are similar to some of the other ones that we've done. And I'm thinking, this one is a project in Delta called Sunstone. And some of the concerns that have been raised here, we had similar concerns with this master plan. There's seven separate townhome communities. There's a commercial center, a city park, there's apartments. One of the premises we had here was that every townhome community had to be completely different architecturally. There's also a diversity of housing types or townhome types. So we go from small tandem units, 1,200 square feet, up to large duplexes that are master on the main, they're 2,000 plus. And one of the, this is one of the first communities where we landed on the idea that, you know, when you get to do a big project, you can do more with the public amenities. So if one townhome community has a tot lot, we can put a giant chessboard in another one. We can put a bocce court in another one. And the idea is that they all have their own amenities. There's the public amenity. They're all connected by trails and they all have rightaways to get into each other's community. So that we're not ever replicating amenities that we can, you know, have a much more diverse group of opportunities for people to use. Let me extract to the townhomes just quickly. We're proposing two to four-bedroom homes, two- and three-story duplex to row homes, and they're about 1,100 to 2,200 square feet in different locations on the site. And we're also new to Squamish. We've planned on being here a long time. We just opened our first community. Every time we do, we learn something from the people that live here. On this one, we have overhyped garages for roof racks and we've done different things. So we're very adaptive. If we hear something that people want in Squamish, we'll build that because it's too organic to do that. In the apartment building, studios to three-meds, there was a question about where the affordables are. There's two buildings and the units are peppered through each building. So no, they're not in a precinct that would be identified. They're throughout the buildings. And there are various sizes. And just on the weekend, I was thinking about what project of ours would be close to, or one that we've done is close to what we're proposing here and that's mature. So this, this is a project in a natural setting and it's in Burnaby actually, but it has two-bedroom to four-bedroom row townhomes. And I just want to quickly flip through a few images. This is 15 years on. So the lesson here was very careful landscape planning, curving the lanes, moving the buildings, trying to create as many unique opportunities for each home as possible. So you can see some of them are side entries. This is a townhome entry. And those are the lanes that over time have grown in and it's, it's lovely to go there now. So just a quick explanation of the community amenities. Susan covered all of the four items that we're proposing. I just want to give a brief explanation. So on the affordable housing units, the 23 red restricted apartments, the cost of holding on to provide those is over $3 million. And what we're asking or proposing is, is that the CAC's half of the money, 1.75 billion, be directed towards those 23 units and then you top up the remainder, which is about 1.4. That math is something that can be verified by Corales or a third party. That's what, we've done a similar program on other projects. And it's a similar thing with the park. With the park. With the park, we estimate, we've had the park estimated at about 3.1 million. 1.75 million comes from the CACs, and we top up the rest. So there's a total additional voluntary contribution of 2.8 million, in excess of the 3.5 that's coming under the policy. You've heard enough from me, so...
Okay. Well, thanks for the opportunity to elaborate. It was good to hear questions come from council first. With regard to the park and open space, I think where we're coming from is, we had a, we had six principles that we were focusing on. And one was, the first principle was to create a hub. And that came about through the two open houses, we had the public open houses, and there was a lot of commentary, a lot of questions about, how are you going to make sure, people coming to use this space, don't go through my backyard? And we heard that over and over and over again. And I think it became really important to us to say, well, you know, if we created a hub, if we created a place that was identifiable, that had a park space to it, people knew they could come to it, and then from that spot, they could branch out and use the trail network to get out to the rest of the park spaces, the other seven parks, and the trails to the east. Then we would have, hopefully, made a better sort of overall neighborhood. So the hub was one of them. Permeable and connective and looping were all the sort of things that we thought about when we thought about the trail systems. And I'm glad to hear that that's on your mind as well. These are trails that are for the most part old cart paths. But we look really carefully at which ones to save, which ones to give away, which ones need to go where. And what we wanted to try and do is to create a hierarchy of trails. So there is a big three-and-a-half meter wide multi-use pathway that's 1.2 kilometers long. It goes from the hub towards the east, and loops back on itself. So if you're able to disable young kids, old kids, it's a great place for you to go and for you to connect through the neighborhood. It also connects up to the parks, to the trails to the east as well. Making sure that we're connecting north and south as well is important, because not only are there great trails to the northeast, but there's also people living to the northeast. So there's a two-and-a-half meter wide trail system, and that's the one that Susan pointed out earlier. And it's about 1.7 kilometers long. And then there's about 1.7 kilometers of six-foot wide trail that again loops back on itself throughout the development. And there are the little thin, squiggly yellow lines. You can see one up in the northwest corner, and primarily on the east side. So the other two bits were to celebrate activity and celebrate nature. And we can't really call it a park if we don't have things for people to do. And I think there's great opportunity. The hub, just to give you an idea, is about three-quarters of an acre in size. So if you think about that, you know, what does that mean? It's a big space. Two-thirds of it is open lawn area, a third of it is adventure playground. So that would create opportunities for active play for kids from newborns all the way up to 12, 13 years old. The open lawn area is two-thirds of that space, about the size of a hockey rink. So if you can get your head around how big that is. The idea that you could throw a ball, kick a ball, throw a frisbee, all of that stuff can happen in the hub park. It's right adjacent to one of the existing ponds, which also has a loop trail and a lookout and covered shelter as well. Right beside the hub is a bike hub, that is just adjacent to the, what's left of the existing parking, and right on, near the parking on the road. So again, one of the bigger issues with people driving, where do they park? Where do they unload their bikes? How do they clean their bikes before they hook them back up to their cars? The bike hub will do it. Just the south park, which is just to the, south of the hub, is where the pump track was, or is planned to be. And it's, again, about three-quarters of an acre. The pump track takes about half that size, so the other half would be, again, open meadow, active space. And then there are a number of, number five more individual little park spaces that range in size from around 3,000 square feet to somewhere around 8,500 square feet. So that's about the size of a tennis court, up to four tennis courts, just to give you an idea of the size of it. And again, I think part of it, if you think about the activity that happened in a tennis court size, there are fast balls moving around, that's the kind of stuff that can happen in those spaces. They're primarily open areas for active recreation. It goes without saying that along all the trails, there are various places to sit, various places for picnic, various places to view nature, and that's the idea of celebrating nature. Lots of opportunities in the northwest, on the north part of the site, and around where the pond is, where the beaver is, to really understand that this is an extremely sensitive area. And that's also a great contribution to the open space.
How big is the proposed town park?
It's about three-quarters of an acre. So it's, I can tell you exactly how big it is, 11,000 square feet, of which two-thirds of it is open lawn, and a third of it is adventure playground.
Got any questions? Sandy? Yeah, come on up. Yeah, you can come up and see over here if you'd like. Thank you very much. You can stay here.
I'm assistant.
Yeah, they might have questions.
Thanks for the opportunity. I'm Adam Smith, and just representing a group of arguably most affected individuals in the community who are to a tightest proximity with Skyridge and Rockbridge homeowners. So try to consolidate all the questions and comments into one person, hopefully, so.
Great, thank you.
And thanks for your time over the last weekends, making it this, on this issue. I may not think the focus right now for us is the nuts and bolts, or the sections which have changed a whole bunch, and they will change through this whole process. I think it might everyone to come up and stand up there and see if that feels like the right product for there. See if it feels like there's enough room, if you were in those areas, at Megan Creek and at Greenside as well. Definitely, just come and stand up there, and that's all I really want to say about the actual product proposed in that area. I want to focus more on the OCP. We're at a very critical time in our community where we're amending this very important document, built by the community, administered and secured by yourselves. And this is, there's nothing about this proposal that fits the current OCP, almost nothing. As well as the executive summary of opinions from the committee driving the next OCP. An extensive research on both the current and the draft OCP. There is no, no one's looking for a hub here. No one's, it's not, the land use is not for a neighborhood. We made trades on this land already, with the previous developer. We provided a revenue source in the hotel, provided a revenue source in the townhouses, and we provided a long-term revenue stream in the golf course. The golf course was not feasible, not run properly, I'm not sure. But we don't owe anyone anything on a speculation purchase. This was purchased, not supported by the OCP, not supported by landlords, in hopes that that could change. And now when we see the draft, the OCP that's going to come out and be finalized, it also doesn't support this area, as being housing at this time. And we reviewed all kinds of other lands that are available, to develop lands that are, if not already zoned for this, closely zoned. You know, if this was an insensitive piece of land, asking for an RS2 to an RM change, I mean, I think this is a slam dunk with our current makeup and housing issues. But it's not, this should be one of the last pieces of land we look at changing. We have the estuary, we have Bain Island, our two, in the river, our two most sensitive pieces of land in the district. This is arguably the third. Why are we looking at this now? It doesn't make sense to me. There is other land. This was a choice to purchase this without the support of the community program, and the community-built OCP. It's such a very dangerous precedent, that if the community builds something and has full support, that because you purchased something, you can manipulate or change that. That's business. I don't, you know, look down my nose at anyone for doing business at all. It's just that this isn't in community plan. There's one correction on the presentation that was done. It's actually currently all protected. The presentation showed a net gain on protected areas, but the OCP actually protects it right now. And so if we're looking at our accelerated growth target as, not worst-case scenario, but most accelerated case scenario that's outlined in the OCP, we could look at this piece of land in 20 years if we need to. We don't need to look at it right now. It's just not there. There are over, if you look on what's waiting to be read, projects in reading, or the development showcases, over 1,000 units coming online in the next two to three years. We currently do have a shortage. You, with the help of other developers, have been fixing that shortage, and that is going to start to be realized slowly over the next few years. Plus the phase buildouts of Oceanfront, Chikai, and on and on. This is long-term and doesn't necessarily solve the problem that we're having today. We've already done a very good job of working with people to help start to solve that. We're not anti-development, we're not anti-jobs, anti-business. But one of the biggest items in the OCP summary is manage growth effectively. It was one of the most strongly supported, 99% of people that answered that question, either strongly or very strongly, suggested that this is one of our largest issues. We don't feel that this is managing growth effectively. That document laid out hubs, it laid out neighborhoods, where we should have them. People put stickers on a board. It became the draft, and it doesn't outline this. I could go on and read a whole bunch of things from the OCP current and future that don't support this, but I think you get my point. Thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else that would like to speak, yeah, come on up.
Hi, I'm Madila Kabani, and I'm also one of the, I own 15 and 14, the west, to the very end of Dowood. I agree, I concur with my friend, that's speaking for our whole group. The property that's directly behind me is the zoning for the RS1. And like my friend said, this zoning has already been there for a while. The land has made its deals with other, for the hotel, for this RS1 zoning. Those things were all in place. As far as that RS1 zoning changing to a townhouse, possibly changing to a townhouse zoning, once again, it wouldn't really fit the structure of the development that's happening there. It's not supporting the environment that's there. Also, Polyga suggested, as the setback requirements, I don't really think that that's very fair. Down the road, they're proposing a setback of 15 feet up close to where I am. They're proposing a setback of nine feet. I think it should be, if they're going to propose something, it should be a standard proposal. Having said that, I do support that the zoning stays the same. The RS1 stays the same. It's already there, it just stays the same. And the rest of the property is protected the way it should be. That's all I want to say.
Yeah, come on.
Hi, I'm Paddy Kostrowski, and I live at Greenside Estates, one of the neighboring townhouse complexes. And I guess I had a question, I don't know if you...
Hey, maybe just for everyone, specifically where Greenside Estates is.
It's sort of the more northern duplex set of the current duplex sets. Megan Creek is at the lower part. Yeah, if we go back to that map, the one with ABCs would be great, in the original.
Just so everyone knows exactly.
Number two.
Number two, yes, sorry. So I'm in, yeah, I'm there. And I guess I was just wondering to, was it Susan? So, a lot of the...
Susan, do you want to maybe join us on your side?
Yeah, the map with the G's on it, and then the new access point. Does the new access road then run over the protected G property? Was that correct in my understanding, that it's going to come far enough south that it's going to run over one of those lots, an overprotected area? That is designated, once again, protected area? Or did I misunderstand that?
I'm not sure. What was it?
If I can, if my, the lot G is through the wetland area, but is where the current path is for the carts?
Yes, the roads are on the existing cart paths.
So they'll be wide into a certain extent?
But that map that you had, that had the two pieces of district land that you designated as G, on both sides of the road for the hotel. Yes, exactly. So that, that would then encroach, the new road that will need to be built, will need to encroach on that G property.
No, the road isn't going in. The road, all of the development that Polyga is proposing is fully within their site, and none of it is going out to district land, so that's not changing from there.
And then just, I don't know, I, I'm a bit mind-boggled by some of it. But if portion of the council or committee here is asking about the Newport Ridge Road, like that shouldn't go in, or it's not going in, or that isn't an access point. And then the road through the middle was asked, is that road necessary? And could it be an access, emergency access-only road? So now we're talking about two roads for potentially 500 homes that are not, the two roads are now not going to be there. And thus putting more strain on the upper part of this thing, to which I think you had said that that access on the north part along the straight line is very stupid, unfriendly.
The access on Dowood is steeper than the other access, and that's why we're assuming that people prefer, even people who live in the second or larger areas, they're going to prefer to come in, in terms of the town access, because it's going to be an easier grade, it's going to be an easier way to...
Which, yeah, to me is obvious. It seems reasonable, I would do that. But my question is that if it was sort of already asked that that road's only the emergency access, then it's a great will to go through the center of this already protected, green space land to have 500 people, minimum, 500 cars minimum, this is 500 homes, up to 1,000 cars daily, going back and forth through the center of this property.
It's 500 over the whole property, so the northern portion is, I'm assuming about two-thirds? Anyway, just not...
Large enough, a lot more cars going through there than there are now.
Yes.
Okay. And that was just sort of more unquestionable, almost. And just to Adam's point, that, yeah, this is protected land. It's not being given back to us as protected, it is protected. Yeah, come on up. We are way over time, so.
Hello, I'm Mary Ann Council. My name's Kathy Smann, and I live at 41205 Rockbridge Place. And I just want to say, you probably know my family has been involved in development over the years, and I'm not opposed to development at all. And I think Polyga is one of the most professional developers I've seen, and your work is really good. Very pleased with it. My thing lies with when you were talking about the history. I just think maybe as a council, you might want to delve into that a little bit more, as to why the land was, became a golf course in the first place. And unfortunately, the two people that have all the information are no longer with us. One is my father, and one is Rick Shear. And that land is very sensitive. I mean, for them to get the golf course, fisheries was all over it. They weren't allowed to do this or that, and there was no development. The only thing was as possible as possible. Said earlier, was the rezone for the 10 Bearland STRATA lots, that would enter from now Dowood Drive. And it was zoned, but not subdivided, and again, I think it was 463,000 dollar amenities fee that had to be paid. I do have those documents in my office somewhere, if you want to see it. But I just think it's really important to think about that, and why the land was even allowed to be a golf course and not a residential development. And, you know, it's very sensitive, as other people have said. There was one developer that tried to buy the golf course, didn't go through because he wanted to put a bridge at the bottom where Newport Road is, but that was not allowed. The, when we did our three-lot subdivision, there was an easement put on a piece of land where the cart path had been, that the purchaser, or Feldberg, had to give that to the district as an easement for a golf cart path. So in my mind, that's about four years ago. That means golf course, right, you think of golf course. And there was, there was one other thing to do with that. But I have quite a few questions, but I'm not going to take up your time here. I haven't actually found it on... I haven't actually kind of done speaking, but I just would try to draw the attention to please take your time, really deliberate over this and maybe delve into why it was became a golf course and not residential. Thank you.
Yeah, and I have that exact note here. Thanks Kathy. Any other comments? And I'm going to have to make this the last one. All right, two more. We are already half an hour over time, so. Yeah, one of you. Ladies first.
She's closer.
She had a minute.
Hi, everyone. My name is Angie Proctor. I am one of the landowners in Neighborhood Three and have met with Kevin and Emma in discussions on this. So I think the points that contradict the OCP that have already been mentioned are the already deemed residential lands within the urban boundary that are meant for development at this point, as well as the green corridor issue. The third piece for me that stands out in the new OCD draft, because I have an OCP draft that I haven't read the current one, is this idea of a good neighbor? And I think it's, yes, I'm very affected. I'm not sure, Kevin, in terms of those sections, how accurate they actually are, in terms of what's on there. I don't know if it's the townhouse height, with the right setbacks or not, but for me we're talking size, height, and density. So does it make sense to sandwich in between that tiny little strip of land that used to be a fairway? There's a weird little triangle of RS1. When I bought the land, knowing that that was there, for me, a single-family home is different than rows of townhomes, whichever way they're oriented. So that was, that's just the last piece that I want to highlight is this idea of being a good neighbor and what that looks like in which communities. Anyway, I'm more sure of time to talk to Jason Wood.
Thank you. Yeah, Morris.
I never invited you to the table, so I'm just up there. Jason Wood, I'm the developer of Squamish through my company, Diamond Development. I live in the hospital in a different area of Squamish. Wanted to make a couple of quick comments and certainly I'd like to echo Kathy's comment. Polygon's a top-notch organization, we should be happy to have them in our community. I wanted to share first how I plan Sky Ridge development with our multi-use. We certainly wanted a number of different housing types in our community that we put together, all the way from RS1, single-family, to apartment, single-level living. And that was important to us to build a community, even though it's smaller than this community, build a community that was available for lots of different folks. The way we structured our development is we put the RS1 on Dowood Drive and on now named Horizon Drive, we tried to link those neighborhoods to existing RS1. Obviously, there was an RS1 in the golf course designation and there was an RS1 with Brockridge. So we put the RS1, married it to the RS1. We put our density up in places on our site, which although they're riparian, they're also isolated, they can't be built upon in the future. So we put our density in those types of locations and we tried to marry what we did on the site, people who existed there. That was our strategy. The second thought is, the site, we talked about it here, it's obviously very hilly, it's very challenging, and as the mayor commented, it's scarred up a little bit right now, Sky Ridge. There's no other way to build these hillside communities, you've got to tear them up and then rebuild them back together. So I think there'd be a great opportunity for Polygon when they're sculpting their land, to put different types of buildings in locations where they might not think might fit. So if a townhouse doesn't fit on us somewhere now, they're going to be moving material all over that site, lifting, dropping, packing, that kind of thing. So there's opportunities to put different types of building types where they might not think there is now. Third comment is on access and I certainly, I don't have the knowledge of the environmental studies and what has been found or what hasn't been found, and I honestly don't know the area well enough below to comment on it, but the people also need access. So I'd be a little concerned that right now, and I don't know the number of housing types up top, all coming out, one exit point. And there was talk about, well, that would be strata road and then maybe an emergency road. That's a lot of housing units where people are driving their cars and leaving one spot. They are leaving on a road that now we've put a school there, or we're building a school there. So it's going to be busy, it's going to be busy there and I'd be concerned that there's only one way out of that top area. So a couple of comments. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. So Susan, I'm wondering if you can put your slide on. You're looking for specific comments from councilmen. I suspect council has some additional comments, but maybe put that slide of the specific things up, we can get back on and then we can talk about other aspects of that. Thank you very much, everybody.
It's a bit closed off, hang on a second. This one gets disappeared. It's in the staff report, but I can read the three items here, I can show them. End of the staff report.
Is it at the end?
Yes. So the first one was applying the CACs to parks 50%, parks 50% affordable housing. The second one was use of the detailed assessment method for some of the riparian areas. And the third one was that tricky interface area in the RS1, so what should we be doing there? So those are the three?
You're talking about the Sky Ridge.
Yes, that interface there.
And obviously it's open up, I just wanted to make sure you're addressing those questions specifically.
Thank you. Interesting discussion because when I look at this, you know, there's obviously, I guess, many benefits, there could be many benefits from a proposal like this. I do have some concerns. For me, this has always been sensitive habitat. The court outlines it as wildlife corridor. I know it was a golf course, but there's all kinds of avenues for wildlife through there and it is significantly sensitive habitat. So for me, this is different than considering something like the Chikai Fan proposal, where you're kind of going into forest that hasn't been zoned before. This has been through the zoning mill and I had discussions with previous owners about this. This land, in my mind, is compensation for a lot of the development around it and is green space to complement, it gets the hotel, townhomes, et cetera. So for me to start chipping away at green space is a bit of a higher threshold than what we otherwise. And I'm going to start at the last one, the one that, we don't have a slide up here unfortunately, but the neighborhood conflict. I'm sympathetic with the neighbors who have purchased property with OCP green space in front of them. That's not just lands that might be developed one day, but it's already been through the development mill and the designation it came up with was OCP. And I think if our OCP is going to mean anything, there has to be a very strong reason to change it when it would negatively affect those property owners. One gentleman suggested that we go up there and stand and look over that. I actually did that yesterday. I stood over lots, looking down at that little portion that we rezoned a few years ago, and also looking down at the narrow portion of the fairway. It is frankly hard to imagine, just standing there, and I'm not a professional of that, imagining significant development in that thin strip on the western half of those properties. The ones in the eastern half, where the front lawn to that previously zoned area, those law owners would have bought knowing that it was lands adjacent to them that could be zoned for residential, zoned before the development came. So they understood that. Nevertheless, as somebody pointed out, it was zoned for single-family, Fairland Strat Act, which is different than townhomes, I think. So my view of that area is to dial it back a bit. I'm not going to get specific, but I think we have to be a bit more sensitive to the neighboring landlords there based on our previous OCP and the previous zone. Second, as far as the amenities go, I mean, I guess my general comment on the park is to develop as little as possible because while I appreciate you could do a lot of things there, this is for me primarily sensitive habitat and maybe it's not the place to put some of those activities. So I would rather just go with our regular amenity formula and step away from applying a lot of the amenity contribution towards upgrading park facilities. The third part is the environmental. And to be frank, at this point, I'm having difficulty with everything south of Lot B. Lot C is the one up next to Sky Ridge. Lot D is that piece that comes into the middle because we don't have a plan there.
I'll just try and pull that one from the papers back.
And that one, you know, there really wasn't enough information, topographic and so forth, to really make a decision on that, but there may be other concerns that I just haven't figured out yet. But that one I can understand, it's not immediately adjoining neighborhoods, it might not be a sensitive habitat. But south of that, I have a concern. That has always been for me very sensitive habitat, spotting areas, there's a myriad of little streams and so forth, who probably know. I particularly have a problem with this development in front of the hotel, which I'm not the hotel owner, but to me that doesn't add anything to the experience in that area. Apartment buildings, density residential, and I prefer that to be just the way it is, to be frank. So those are my comments at this point. Oh, the OCP amendment, because of those comments, I would be happier with spot OCP amended as opposed to going and trying to just cover the whole thing. I'm not sure, that would cause me great concern, I think, to be faced with a decision like that.
Well, that's tough to follow and I completely concur with that's one of the gracious comments. I am having difficulty with the fact that we have an OCP engagement tomorrow that will bring out the community to discuss this, and this is happening in the absence, I know the proponent has gone out to the community, but to really understand what it means to our community to take a large piece of green space out of an official community plan that was laid forward by the community is a very difficult spot for me and I am in general opposed to removing green space and corridors from an OCP that's set forward by the community in order to just build some townhouses. As Denise Adams Smith put it so succinctly, we have 1,000 townhouses and just townhouses in development right now. I don't feel like we're at a deficit for townhomes that we need to remove community green space from the OCP. And the conversation continuing of the OCP coming forward, this is, it's an inappropriate time to have this conversation for me even within the, I need to be able to understand that the community wants it to happen and it's not just a development proposal to build some more townhouses in our community. And I, they're all in common sense, also raised, said I couldn't agree with, this land is very important for the community, it's sensitive habitat and we need green space. It's, I know it's privately owned, but it was purchased as green space, so.
I just wanted to clarify, it is privately owned.
Yeah, I'm not saying make it into a park or anything else. I'm saying it's some habitat that could be maintained as habitat regardless of whether it's privately owned.
And I just did want to clarify, I was at a meeting last June, or July, I can't remember when it was, at the CDC meeting, Community Development meeting, where councils asked the question, should this be part of the general OCP that we're going through now? Or should we deal with this separately?
Yes.
And I believe with the city of the day, the council ratified that it would have gone through as a separate process. It would still inform the new OCP, but it was determined by council almost a year ago.
Exactly.
We would be enamored.
Yes.
That it be part of, we can't do that. I'm just saying it's a process thing, so it really doesn't matter if it's within the OCP itself or now it's an OCP amendment, bottom line, regardless that it's separated out from the general OCP.
Yes, and that was very much the case, we wanted to keep this as separate. We didn't want a single development to become an issue that sidelines the OCP conversation about generally how do we treat development? So that's why the current draft OCP still shows it as the same designation.
It's still in context with all the other issues there in the OCP.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Anything other much to comment at this point?
Yeah, just, well, thanks for clearing up the OCP one because I do remember us all discussing that and I thought that was, that's why I proceeded, because we all thought we would leave it separate OCP. That's why we're here today. I'm concerned about a nine-foot setback, a 27-foot setback.
Leaders.
A 27-foot setback. And, you know, one of the big things to me with this property is the trail connections. And, you know, I remember back a few years when people were trying to get across that property because it was actually the golf course that brought the road in that made all those houses able to be built. And I remember William was all excited about that road going there because it made his property, well, it wasn't developed at all, anyway. But then after that, the golf course went for a while, it wasn't very successful and people were using the golf course cart tracks to get from the new subdivisions back and forth. And they ended up wanting to feedback, cranky once in a while, or try and stop that. It was unfortunate because those trail managers, I think, are very important to them. And so, you know, that's what I like about this. As far as, you know, the views, I'll have to go up there and stand on those properties, but you do have to be careful with the views because I know I had a piece of property that I had with a view and all of a sudden the trees started going and, you know, I didn't have a view anymore. After about 10 years, the view's gone. So keep that in mind, but I'll go up and take a look at that. I think that, you know, we, obviously this is coming back, this is just an information thing right now, so. What's the next schedule on this? I know the proponent's having an open house and then it comes back. I mean, I think, I would like to see this information again before we have to make a decision.
So we will, the next step for the district will be to wait until the next open house is held, take the committee's feedback, see how the proposal needs to change and then come back for either another committee meeting or come back for one week and have another discussion because you can still change things after the first reading.
That's a lot of information for one week.
What's about the, you know, both of the council meetings?
So for me, when I'm considering something that requires no OCP amendment threshold for that, my view should be very, very high. So considering a project like this, you look at things like amenity package, you look at preservation of green space and I'm of the view that I don't think, from what I see right now, that the project has met that test and I agree with residents who have spoken and I'm. have spoken, and I'm very disappointed with the community amenity contribution approaches, particularly on the housing front, 23 units of housing. I, I, you know, I just thought that's just way short. I understand how the formula was calculated, and I understand that developers want to minimize cost, but frankly, it's very, very disappointing. And I, I think we, as a council, the way that I look at this, is do we need to do this right now? Are there other areas where development can occur that will be less impactful on our apartments, and also provide amenities to our community? And unfortunately, I just, this project, I don't see too many things that we go in that direction.
Thank you, council. So, Susan, one of the ones you mentioned was the RER setbacks?
Yes.
I think I'm fine with the way it was treated, as you described in the report. Do you have other questions about that?
Did I have questions?
Yeah, that was one of the areas you wanted guidance on, but I wasn't quite sure.
Well, yes, that was just one of the things, at the very beginning, that the applicants need direction on. They have proposed to have an environmental package that uses the detailed assessment method, which is permitted under the riparian area regs for disturbed sites only, and it's permitted under your bylaw. So we just wanted confirmation on that. I wonder if I could actually just clarify one thing on the environmental, which a few people have mentioned. What is being proposed is not a loss of riparian areas, in fact, there's a slight gain, there is already site disturbance because of the golf course. The disturbance is being reshaped slightly, instead of having golf course greens and cart paths that are disturbed, those are where the housing is going. So the nature of disturbance is changing, and there's a slight gain in habitat compared to what is there today. That is the habitat balance that was done by Cascade Environmental, was to calculate all of that. So there's not a loss of habitat, it's a change in how the habitat is protected, not the amount.
Thank you for that point. So I think overall, I was very surprised by the density in Lot C. I thought the treatment was going to be quite mild there, to respect the zoning around it. So that, that surprised me quite a bit. I think what's tempting about this proposal to me is making this a public park and enabling that connectivity, but I'm also very cognizant of the, just the importance of the riparian area and the habitat that is here, and so for me, that balance between sort of over-manicured versus just leaving things in a natural state, or returning more things to their natural state from a golf course, is important to me. I feel like with some of the questions that have been raised today, I don't know enough of the history of this land, and how it was, the zoning changed from owner to owner, and I, I would like to know more about that, in order to make a decision going forward. I think for me, this proposal always was going to be less is more, and I appreciate Polygon's attempt to work with our community to find solutions. I'm not sure this is the solution right now, as it's proposed. It seems a bit too dense, and certainly that area around the hotel feels like just a, quite a big wall between the north and south portions of this land, for me. Anyway, I'll leave it at that.
So maybe I'll just quickly, full counsel, this is not approval of anything, but if the report with the riparian treatment, everyone's okay with the detailed assessment of riparian? If not?
I agree.
Okay. What were the other ones? I've got you. A question on that?
No comments.
Okay, you can wait till I finish.
The second one was the 50-50 split of the CACs.
I think the CAC conversation is generally not meeting the mark. I think, from my point of view, I can't remember who said it, but what I'm generally hearing is, we don't necessarily want a massive programmed green space here, but, so we don't necessarily want millions of dollars of infrastructure in this particular green space, from a park point of view.
Just to clarify, a lot of that is going into trails rather than structures.
I think, I think it's premature, because we really don't know what you're talking about yet in terms of CACs, but, but maybe, I think Jason said it, when we're talking from greenway to residential, there has to be a really good reason, a high threshold, and above average CAC on, on anything that is taking something that we use, even to open the door to consideration. Am I generally hearing that from council?
Trails, I think.
Yeah, and trails specifically, absolutely, trail connectivity. We'll get all that detail once we actually see more detail, and I suspect this is going to have to go through some pretty massive regions of, I think of the words, revising. And what was the third one?
The third one was just comments on that RS1 zone at the top, where the papers are here, that concerns.
Yeah, and, and so, I mean, the RS1 wasn't the OCP as our, as residential, it's currently single-family home. There's always possibility if someone asks them for application, that's not an, that particular case is not an OCP change, so it's a bit of a different litmus test there, although I do believe that you want to make sure you're considering your neighbors, as we all do when we're trying to develop. So, so I'm not necessarily, and it looks like it goes from 15 single-family homes to 26 duplex slash triplex-ish, is that correct?
That's roughly correct.
So an additional 11 units. So I think, to be honest, I'm, I'm open to something in that small wedge, but I'd have to see what it looks like, I'd have to see what some of the corridors are, I'd have to understand that a little bit better. I understand they're moving it this way from this way, because, you know, you're basically seeing the end of the single-family home, and so it might not be a dramatic difference, but I don't know that without sort of seeing some visuals to let me understand that. With regard to Lot C, you know, I look at the subdivision, and I hate to say it, but we should have had some sort of trail connecting the skinny end of Lot C out to Doward Drive, because now anyone who's in that area, I mean, they're not walking or biking anyway, because there's no way for them to get out of there in a quick manner, to get onto a transit route. And unfortunately, we didn't create any continuity through, through the Sky Ridge development there, but that's another topic. In the future, we need to make sure we're putting those connections when we, we don't have things that we felt next door. You know, I think Lot C has to be rethought, reconfigured, and, you know, the sort of, sort of, two-thirds of Lot C is south of the wedge that's already zoned by the owners, so a little extra density there isn't impacting anyone except their own development, so I could consider sort of a little more dense on the, I guess, the east side of Lot C. West side, I'm looking for a bit of a mix of housing forms and some difference in there, if this is to come back, in consideration of up-sight lines and just neighborhood impact. I generally don't have a problem with Lot B, other than I'd like to see more mixed housing, period, through every development level on this one. But I do have trouble with that road, Lot G, and I understand, I, I do believe there needs to be two access points, and I know the challenge of, of this area, but we talked about fragmentation of habitat, and this is case in point, this is a clear bisection of the east-west side of this habitat with a road system. We need to figure out a different way of getting into that subdivision that, that doesn't necessarily have a road going right across it. And, I mean, I've got ideas, but I'll let you guys figure it out. With regard to lots, I guess ED, A, that, for me, is a no-go zone. The hotel there is the biggest hotel in town, it is a major tourism driver, and we need to make sure that we're keeping that as, as iconic as it is. For me, it also is another further fragmentation of that very, very important area where all those rivers come down from the block. And so, you know, we need to make sure that that whole area is contiguous green space. I, I see some potential development in the southern portion, I guess it's lots PH-12, Phase 3, Lot A, I don't know about Phase 4, we don't see any detail there, but I see some potential development in those areas. So I, you know, I'm, I'm open to various pieces of this, but for me, and I, and I have a note here, I mean, we really understand what the original redevelopment was, what the original compensation was, in terms of the land. I suspect if this golf course ever came forward today, it would never be approved with our current regulations, and back then, I remember it being a real tough sell, and probably shouldn't have been approved back then, but, but we can't go backwards. So those are my thoughts. Counselor, stop.
Thanks. Ms. Stedson.
So I just wanted to, we talked about the trading riparian areas, and you also mentioned the fact that it's golfing carts, and it's, it's pathways that golf carts went on. I think about development of green space, and I think about what's permeable, what's not dug up. Building a golf course is entirely different than building a townhouse infrastructure, and putting humans into an area of green space where there's habitat, and sensitive habitat. So I don't compare those two, and I really, the whole trading off of green space and digging up one space and flooding another space in order to accommodate, although I recognize that in areas of small, you know, for me, small areas of trading, you know, filling in a ditch, or, but making an entire subdivision out of a green space is different than putting in a golf course to be, that is permeable, still accessible as a greenway corridor for animals to be able to travel through to the higher areas there. There isn't a lot of connectivity in green space in our community currently, that's down in the lowlands, and allows animal pathways to get up to less inhabited areas. And I just can't compare a golf pathway to ripping up in order to put in water, sewer, pipes for single, or for townhouse development. And, yeah, the threshold for me to develop this is, you know, to say that there's going to be a community amenity that's going to make it okay for me, I'm not sure if there is a community amenity that will make it okay for me to take something out of OCP, unless there is OCP consensus. So that is, there, there isn't a button or a trigger that will take this and make it okay for me to put townhouses here, without having community consensus.
No surprise.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I, you know, I think about when this came to us here, here now, and the conversations we had, to get us to where we are now. I mean, I do remember the conversations that day. But when, when you talked about the hotel there, and this is kind of where it rocks me, about a hotel there that looks out over a beautiful pond, it's on private property. And so, I remember when all those little condos that are along there bought on the golf course, so they bought a condo on a golf course, and then the golf course shut down, and they're looking at cottonwood trees out there, beautiful view, now they've got cottonwood trees. So when you say there's a hotel there, and it's one of the biggest hotels in town, and it's got the best view, so I don't like to see something in front of that. If nothing happens, it could be just a real confidence. So, so, I mean, just, just remember that. So, and then, you know, you know, I mean, I, I am sympathetic to habitat, greenways and rural habitat works and that, you know, the road going through it, it's going through the golf course, so, I'm just not as critical, I guess, at some of the areas others are, but, you know, that cottonwood, it grows fast, and it'll just take this whole thing over. I like the idea of this area being utilized by the community in the best ways it can. So that's, this is about the intention to do that. There's problems, it's our number problems, and, I'm looking forward to seeing that.
Does that provide you with a little bit of feedback?
Yeah, we've got a lot, and obviously, we know what to concentrate on when we bring it back to another committee. But it is a lot to absorb, I understand that, it's a lot for us, it's a...
Where is the open house on 27?
Second, second hotel.
Obviously, just go to the top.
Great, thank you very much, everyone. We're going to take a three-minute reset. Good afternoon, everyone, we are in our committee, the whole meeting of May 24th, I can't believe it's been a month, and we are on item 32, which is our solid waste utility bylaw date, and we're way over time, so we're going to hopefully catch up a little bit, because we're supposed to be done this one, too, by now, so.
All right. Hi, it sounds good, thank you. Good afternoon, here are council. My name is Shannon White, I'm stability coordinator here in the District Council, for those tuning in online. So we're here today to discuss, to bring forward for discussion to council the proposed amendments to the solid waste bylaw, solid waste bylaw. And so what I will do is give a little bit of background, the key changes that we're looking at proposing, or the key changes that we are proposing and why, and then really open up for discussion and get feedback on these proposed changes from council. I just included two definitions that I'll, I'm positive that everyone is familiar with, but just to reiterate, is that we're going to, often you'll see MFH, so referring to multifamily homes, and then the ICI sector, which is industrial, commercial, institutional, so any businesses within, within the district. So without further ado, just jump in, so in fall of 2016, council approved the zero-waste strategy, which came to, had four key priorities identified in it. So the first one is to implement an organics disposal ban, the second one was to ensure that recycling and organics diversion programs are available wherever someone is in the community, so be it at home, work, on the go, and then also to institute construction/demolition waste guidelines, and then really work on promoting waste minimization at a broader level within the community through education programs. I'll just kind of whip through these, some of them may be familiar, through the zero-waste strategy, but in 2015, the community had, was at 634 kilos of garbage being produced per person. We are just finalizing the stats, but it looks like for 2016, we're going to be at 673 kilos. So it went up, unfortunately, in, between 2015 and 2016. So, and we are trying to aim towards 350 kilos by 2020, which is the provincial target and SLRD target, however, the District Council doesn't have an official target, we kind of are working within what the Missouri Environment and SLRD have.
Can you just maybe further elaborate on how we get the, or person, and that, is all of our waste is divided by the number of people in town, or is it all the construction waste? Like, I'm trying to understand.
So what it is, is we look at, it does include the construction waste, it includes the waste from the businesses, and it's all our residential waste, so kind of all three, all waste produced within the district. We exclude garbage that comes from outside, so Britannia, Berry Creek, those locations, if we get any from Whistler, Pemberton, we exclude that, and then it is divided by the population. It's, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure it's clear how, of things.
Definitely.
I mean, I'd like to, we'll go on, but I'd like to mention why we're considering it by the way, to what are the drivers there, but you go.
For sure. So, and then, in May 2016, we did do a waste audit of what was coming into the landfill, and it was identified in that audit that the largest generators were of garbage were multifamily homes and the ICI sectors. So that was the largest proportion of garbage coming to our landfill, so just as a kind of...
Per capita.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Say that again?
Sorry, I realized I should have included pie graph. Sorry, I realized I should have included pie graph in this. But the largest part, proportion of the garbage coming into our landfill is from multifamily homes and the, our business community. So it's excluding all of our curbside collection, I guess is what you could say. It's like the smallest percentage of garbage. Does that make sense? Yeah? And then one, so here is a little bit of a graph showing if we went towards, um, a 2020 garbage disposal rate of 350 kilos per person. The middle bar, the middle column there shows the, um, increase that we could hit by the different diversion, if we target different diversions. I didn't explain that very well. So, sorry, the first one is as is, that's all the garbage we're producing, currently, the black, solid black line. And then the like tan color is waste prevention. So if we focused a lot on waste education and prevention, you know, zero waste tips, community engagement, we would, that would be the increase in diversion. And then the darker tan would be if we focus on construction demolition. The blue is if we really look at improving recycling diversion in our community across all sectors, like residential and business. And then the green is really if we really target that organic diversion from our garbage. And so you have the 2020 goal of 350 and then a very ambitious goal of 2040 achieving a diversion rate of 120 kilos per person. And so that's, basically this chart is really identifying why we're focusing on the recycling and organics diversion because those two, that green and blue are really those big pieces of pie that we can really chew off, I guess, if you want to say. So I'm jumping, this is a little bit of an overview of the proposed changes to the bylaw. And then I'll go through each one in a little bit more, um, detail. So the first one is to, uh, have three stream separations. So everybody in the community, all residents and businesses would be required to, um, separate into the organics, recycling and garbage, all the waste. The properties that would be affected are multifamily homes and ICI. Then the other second part is that, um, everyone also would be required to educate their tenants or residents about how to separate depending on the building. And then also to post signage within their buildings. And again, that would affect multifamily homes and ICI's properties. Third one is clear bags. So everyone, and when we say clear bags, I'm talking about opaque, clear, like transparent, that you can see through. Garbage, so only garbage would always be placed into clear bags. And I'll get into that one in a little bit more detail. And that would affect, uh, multifamily homes, single family homes and the business community. And then the enforcement piece, of course, which is, um, enforcement around inspections, continuing education, and then, um, surcharges or finding on that level. And again, that would affect everybody in the community. So diving in a little bit deeper, is that the first one is the three stream separation. So really, it's, as I mentioned, it's really, everybody is responsible for ensuring that there's three, everybody is separating into three streams, so recycling, organics and garbage. Multifamily homes and the ICI properties would contract directly with whichever company they want to contract with. The district would not be telling the, you know, different department complexes or whatever to say, okay, you have to use X company. It would just be that mandated that they must do it. Because we also want to leave that open because, um, for example, some of our breweries in town are, or the distillery are, their hops are going to, uh, the Pink Farm in town, which is a totally acceptable. It's not going to the landfill. So we want to leave open for, uh, leave it open for innovation and kind of different opportunities that present themselves. And the reason why single family homes are not affected by this is actually in our current bylaw, anyone who is part of our curb cyclection is required to be separating already. Whether they are or not is not the question, but they are, uh, it's mandated in our bylaw already. I'll have, I'll just go through the three or four, four different changes and then open up to discussion. Does that sound good? Okay. So the education piece we would like to include in the bylaw is that just mandating that, landlords or, um, property managers or stratas would need to inform their new and existing, tenants, residents, contractors, employees around how to separate waste. So, um, if it was a multifamily home, this would probably go through the strata council. If it was in a commercial property, it would go through the landlord. So we would be working with all these individually. And as well, it would ensure that they have to post signage in the waste rooms saying, this is the recycling bin, this is the organics bin, this is what goes here and what goes here. Um, and I will speak to a bit in the education outreach part of this, but, um, we would be, staff would be creating those, that information and helping supply that information and signage for those property owners to use. So the onus wouldn't be on them. We want to make this transition as easy as possible for the community. So I'll, I'll speak to that in outreach, but that's just kind of, please keep that in mind. And so that would affect everyone, but we don't see it as affecting single family homes as much, but it wouldn't be some, it would be new to them. Clear bags. So the first, speak to the concept is that, uh, clear or opaque, transparent bags, um, would be used for garbage. So we would require garbage to be put in clear bags. And municipalities that are doing this already, because everyone says, well, what about, you know, private items that are not garbage? And what municipal, other municipalities are doing is that they do allow one or two, depends on what we would like to do as a district, privacy bags, they call them. So they could be like a, a shopping bag within the clear bag. So people can still have a place to put their private items in their garbage. And this again would affect everybody within the community. So the why around clear bags, it, there are actually several reasons why. It's really, uh, an aid to enforcement piece, um, that, you know, if we look at spot checks or opening dark bags, um, it's just really, it just helps. There's, uh, communities, I have a stat here, sorry. There's, uh, there's stats around people who have seen clear bags, um, really ensure that like people aren't sneaking in glass, grass clippings or paint cans or organic material into their garbage. It also improves safety because, you know, you're cutting open dark bags to see what's in it for auditing purposes. And then you're protecting our staff and our contractor staff against sharp objects, household hazards waste. And then it also really encourages recycling, um, and conserves the valuable space in our landfill, right? So, um, the other municipalities that have done this have seen considerable results. And I'll show you a little bit of a map of where it's been going on. But, um, there might be, so kind of in our research at the district, we saw that there were several frequently asked questions I thought I'd just raise here in case some, some of the council had similar issues, questions. So privacy, again, as I mentioned, there's that colored bag that people could use. Where can people get the bags? So staff would be working with local retailers, farm and advanced to ensure that it's stocked, it's well stocked and that there's a variety of sizes and types and price ranges and that it's available, you know, throughout the town. Not just in one, one store. Excuse me, it shouldn't cost more from our research because it is actually the same plastic material. It's just dyes inserted into that.
I think we're all doing a little plastic though.
Okay, great. Just didn't know how many questions there were.
No, I think it's a great idea.
Perfect. Here's a real quick map.
I'm suspecting everyone has.
For time. And, and I can answer questions afterwards, but, so basically that, it's not really taking place yet in B C. I've heard through the solid waste network, it's kind of, there's people are talking about it here. But it's really happening in Nova Scotia, P E I. Here's a map of just a few, over 40 municipalities in Ontario that are doing it. Halifax saw a huge 24% reduction in their weight garbage after a year and a half implementation. So there have been proven results around implementing clear bags. And then just to speak about the enforcement side, um, so essentially it's, if there is over 5% contamination by in either of those three streams, then it's out of compliance. It's kind of the basic baseline of that. And staff would work internally between bylaw and engineering and all the different departments. And then we're also working with, in touch with external municipalities to see what they're doing, like Regional District of Nanimal has done this to see, you know, how are they doing enforcement as well? So, um, yeah, just, there'd be enforcement. And then outreach and education. So we're really proposing to ensure that we hit, um, the right level of the public engagement through the I A P two. We would be doing engagement after this meeting, um, to ensure that we're on the right track with the community around developing the bylaw changes. So reaching out, saying this is what's proposed, what are your key issues? Do you have any concerns? And then once the bylaw is drafted and adopted by, um, council, then there will be, um, providing workshops, training sessions, the, the, excuse me, the signage and the guides and kind of all that extra material. Really like, as I said, to help the community transition as smoothly as possible because we want this to make, be really a natural change versus, oh no, what are we going through here? So, um, and then we'd also be working with a local group to hopefully ensure that they're trained up so that they can keep the training going in 2018 and on. And then we are, we have been working with, um, Helping Hands and the Food Bank, um, around food rescue. So we've already had some meetings to just talk about how we can ensure that food rescue or recovery is encouraged through the implementation period. So not everyone just suddenly composts all their, you know, food waste. If there's edible food that can be reused within the community, that there, we kind of create those pathways for it to be diverted from composting. So, and then just really briefly, um, staff is working internally, um, in a separate stream. So this is separate from the solid waste bylaw amendment, but I just want to make sure that we're, you're aware that we're working on it, is that, um, in development services, we're just putting together waste room and waste enclosure guidelines for, um, the building, planning, development community. So that when this bylaw amendment occurs, once council passes it, that, um, it's not just a sudden change so that we have all the kind of the tools to reinforce, the, this bylaw amendment, um, through the infrastructure as well in our community. And if I'm screaming everything, please jump in because I'm trying to kind of touch it. And so here's a little bit of a timeline. It's slightly not, it's slightly different than the one in the report to council because I just provided a bit of different, um, extra information, but just, yeah, it's exactly as I said, today we'll have this discussion. I want to hear your feedback, make sure that we're on the right track. And in amending the solid waste bylaw to represent what council wants and kind of has a vision of. And then really looking to stakeholder engagement to make sure that the staff, uh, not the staff, but stakeholders are involved and get their concerns and then, presenting the draft bylaw to you in July. And then really key is that we would have one year from adoption of the new bylaw for like the education outreach training. So there will be no enforcement during that year, no enforcement that has a fine associated with or a fee of any sort. So that one year would be really the training workshops. We would do audits, we would check on it, but then we'd also be, it'd be like engaging the landlords and the property managers to say, okay, you have over contaminated recyclables. Here's some more tools for you. How can we help you? Not here's a fine. And then one year after the end of the education period, then we start enforcing it.
And I think that that's been a big discussion point about pros and cons of that, which will, which will come.
Yes.
Once we consider adoption of the bylaw.
Exactly. And this timeline is, is also of course open to discussion and please. So in a nutshell, here are the three things that I just kind of blew through or four things. And, um, we really just want to get your feedback on it and, uh, if there was any, um, questions like for more detail, I could definitely.
So if we can maybe focus on questions first and then get comments of student head.
I really like this. And I also wonder about, um, we don't have a really long period of organics collection. And when is it going to come up for discussion of extending our, uh, organics gap? Or is it, is that something?
Well, we did extend it a little bit longer this season this year. So in next year's budget, we'll, we can consider, it's been currently the budget set for, we added a month on the year enders.
And still, I think that's, you can force people to separate if they're not going to come and pick it up. So it's like one of those, you're getting on the eggs thing.
We pick it up.
We pick it up. But it's just to, just to be, just to be clear that we will leave versus. So, so we did extend it in the fall for bear safety for, by one month. There's been some talk in the community, um, that some people, gardeners in the spring would also like to extend it in the spring.
Any other questions, councilor, or?
Clear bags are cheaper. So that's a good thing. I buy the mistake every once in a while when we're not towards. What about plastic rag freezer? I remember when the Quest students came in and said, what do you guys for plastic? And then the high school students came in and asked.
You're talking about single, single-use plastic bags?
Well, where we don't use it at the grocery stores anymore.
We've been looking at this for
10 years.
Over 10 years. And the, the current B C legislation doesn't allow us to ban things like that. Other jurisdictions like Manitoba, Ontario, have a different, um, community charter that gives more autonomy to local governments. There is a poss, I mean, there is a legal route, I think. I, I've got a lawyer's opinion about it. I'm hearing who was saying that because it impacts your landfill, if you own a landfill, then you could take a legal route to justify doing that. But currently under the legislation, we can't do it. We can't ban.
But does that say a whole bunch of?
Well, it's not a volume thing. Like, plastic bags are small per volume. They're more of a nuisance, an environmental impact, a wildlife issue, you know, and, and a unnecessary thing.
Is there any communities in B C that?
No. No. I mean, there's some that have, have created, uh, incentives, like significant incentives, but I don't think any community is banning this. I would say that would ban it. That's my understanding, unless I'm reading wrong.
I've heard Victoria might be looking into it, but, um, I don't know, I don't know, I don't think they've gotten it.
Question. The question was, is there any stuff that's been successful?
Well, it's just the students.
There's lots that are looking at it.
Anyway, I like the education stuff.
Any questions?
Uh, yep. Um, for those multifamily units that don't have space right now, what is the plan for them?
We, sorry. We don't have, uh, we don't have a definite plan yet, is the first answer, because we are working with our planning department. We're looking at Whistler, what they're doing as well right now. We can take several different routes. This is kind of where we're at. So it's either make the space. Yeah, I'm not sure how much in detail to go down. Whistler is giving, um, sorry, I'm not.
I guess my question, is it a barrier, is it going to be a barrier for us? Are there enough multifamily units that don't have enough space that this is going to?
It will definitely be a challenge for those ones. The thing is, is that, one, one thing is, is that we have been, uh, on the waste room sizing stuff. We're working with carneys and so for waste rooms that are too small to have all that thing, then we look at pickup. Can we increase the frequency? Smaller bins and then kind of add more. So a smaller garbage bin, increase that pickup and to have, you know, more recyclable bins and organics. So there are ways around it.
Thank you. It's a bit off topic, but it goes back to the, uh, the organic pickups and the odd weeks. I was under the impression personally that, that I thought we extended it into the spring as well, maybe not. But I have had a lot of inquiries. So perhaps, uh, if we could just have some options brought to us to the budget next year for going into the spring, uh, in different increments. It is ultimately a budget decision, I would say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have we looked at the option of perhaps maybe just saying that our landfill, no, no one can take ICI and multifamily, uh, garbage? and multi-family garbage.
We, we haven't yet, but could we is the question and what would be the pros and cons of that?
Uh, we, we haven't looked at that. I'm not sure under the S L R D's waste plan, we, we take garbage from all of the, all of districts. I don't know if we can block out the multi-family I C I. And I don't know what that would do for those residents.
Whistler residents. We charge them a different amount of money, we just can't block them, etc.
So, and then I guess the question has to become, you know, bigger picture. Where does it go? Is that, you know, environmentally, is that, is that actually making things better, big picture? Or is it just making it more convenient for a landfill? I, I don't know the answer to that.
And to build on, is the problem with I C I that a lot of these places don't have big enough space and a lot of them don't have diversion? So like even recycling, they just have garbage. So everything gets stuck in the garbage, therefore the volume is bigger for us.
And, and feedback we received during the zero waste, when we asked, why aren't you recycling? Why are you sending food into the garbage? And for some of these, for some of these being grocery stores and restaurants and places that have a lot of food waste is proportioned. And the answer that some provider gave us was if you make it a rule, we'll do it. But until you make it a rule, we're not going to do it. And so there we are today.
Okay. I mean, I'm not, I don't want to re-litigate the issue because I think, you know, I can pre-put your vote, you know, my preference for the export auction. And I just think of that in the sense of because of the land base that we have in Swamish and all of the environmental constraints, is it a good idea for us to be operating a landfill that takes garbage from, from I C I and, you know, places that are commercial contractors, right? I mean, it's one thing for us to take it from residential curbside collection and people are paying that fee and our citizens expect that. But I think also too, that there may be some challenges around I C I just because of, especially multi-unit buildings, just in terms of human nature. Because it's all going into one bin somewhere, right? And so it's not as obvious who's, who the culprit is if there's, you know, an issue around that. And so whereas, you know, if you're a single family homeowner, it's very clear which bin is yours. And so I just, I think it's more challenging to see that, the bigger reduction in that. I think with businesses, it's for sure because then again, you can identify that. But I wonder, you know, as we move towards a more multi-family housing type, if there might be, I don't know, a couple of options, but I'll leave it at that. And I just wanted to throw that out there to see if it had been considered. My only other comment would be around the enforcement. And I think I'd like to see us focus on the commercial enforcement first before we go after residents. And I, I don't really like the idea of us going into residence in digital bins. I think that my observation is that single family homeowners for the most part are the ones who are feeling the diversion because it's a bit easier. So better to focus on the commercial stuff maybe first before. And, and also we've had a lot of change in our town over the last couple of years, right? I mean, it wasn't that long ago we even had recycling. So, um, and last thing, glass and plastics and recycling. Any thoughts on that in terms of, you know, right now you have to bring your glass, your styrofoam, your plastics to Carneys yourself. It's not part of the curbside program. And are we considering changing that mostly on the glass, I guess, because that's the value of it.
So, um, no. We, it's really the short answer. Um, we won't, uh, open.
It's a cost issue. And maybe council wants to see what the extra cost would be to, to do a glass and styrofoam pickup. And then that would be the reason behind the decision making.
Exactly, yeah. And the cost would be because it's often in communities that have the separate glass bin that would be probably start from as well is that it has to be handled. Whereas right now we are at the automatic thing, right? So there is a, a big cost to that in the bins. But there's something else.
I just wanted to pick up on the enforcement issue. And I'm not sure if it was clear, we glazed over it a little bit perhaps, and we presented on glass. That we, we had quite a robust discussion and some legal opinions. We're working with Jeff and bylaw and talking about the enforcement issue and what we wanted to present here. And we realized that because we're not planning to enforce for at least a year after we, after we have this amendment passed, we didn't have to get all those details together. And so our plan is to pass the amendment without the details of enforcement and then have a, have a year to, to work more with other communities and with, with bylaw and work on that sort of phased implementation and, and policy around what percentage do we start taking out? Or is it, is it a surcharge? What can we do? And where do we concentrate our resources, right? Obviously the biggest bang for the buck, we need to, we need to, or biggest bang for the staff hours in this case. We need to go after where, where we really feel like the worst offenders are, if you will. But we, that's, that's why we're really thin on, on the details here is because we have a whole extra year to figure out.
But you might not, council may decide that we want to, the best way to change people's behavior is to enforce. And, and that we have a pressing issue called our landfill, it is minimal in size. And we may, we may, so I'm just saying, don't, don't be totally married to the idea that we're not going to enforce for a year because we may think that that's the best way to get compliance and to really make a real difference to the great communities. We may not, we may, we tend to like to take a softer approach, but in this case, we might have some compelling reasons why we want to, we want to get going for a year. No, sorry. And just to add to what Jason was saying about the I C I. It could be that to get some of these larger condo and these retail, whatever, commercial businesses, that we do basically set a ground rule saying, if you don't divert this, you've got to ship yours to the city. We don't take this stuff anymore. We don't take mixed anymore. If you can meet this criteria for your condo development, and those condos will realize very quickly that it's going to be a lot more money for them to get a supplier from the city to take their garbage down to the city, where they're going to be paying for separation by hand, which will be much more expensive. So I think we need to start looking at real ways of driving those I C Is towards that diversion. I had, you've already gone, Susan.
Twenty-four percent of our population, maybe under 20, we have a massive diaper issue in our landfill. And nobody brings up diapers. We talk about a lot of different things, but we don't talk about diaper recycling. How are we looking to deal with the amount of diaper waste in our future? I mean, it is massive.
In some jurisdictions like Toronto, actually.
Recycle it, yeah.
So we haven't dived into getting like physical diaper recycling facility in town or, and in my conversations with S L R D, I haven't heard anything about it. However, on the kind of waste, this is a softer approach again, is on the waste reduction side of things, waste minimization. I've been in touch with several like cloth diaper companies, or not companies, cloth diaper training groups. And so looking at arranging workshops and stuff in our community. It's not a solution by any means for the diaper waste that we see in our landfill, but that is one, one aspect that we are working on and setting those up, bringing them to Swamish.
I think you can get more information on how other facilities are achieving.
Yeah, that is definitely something.
And yeah, there are ways to deal with diaper waste and, you know, the cost of the machines and, or that becomes a separate recycling issue that we can, that we can somehow incentivize people to. Because we're not going to move people to class diapers. That's not ever happened in the history of law code. So the other way to deal with it is by having that recycling facility available, which maybe we require of our contractor onsite and have some way that, and same thing is guilty in our education. Into changing behaviors and dropping off diapers or collecting, maybe it could be great small businesses that take diapers and dropping off new diapers. There's a lot of ways that the economy can deal with it as well if we have some to, to accomplish them.
Well, I probably changed more diapers than any person in this room.
And you probably threw away more diapers than anyone.
And the first one tried the cloth, but by the time you got two diapers. To Karen's point, I think Karen brought up the point that if we're going to make all these condo units and places like that recycle better, we're going to have to make sure that we get plans in place for that.
And that, that's in, that's in the chat.
Yep. And because I know the last time we talked about it, we talked about demolition and how to do a little better job on demolition. In the last four months, I've seen six houses crunched up, put in a big can, addicted to the landfill as we never acted on, we talked about it.
Well, we did not, I thought that was coming back, no?
It's part of, so it is the, we are going to develop construction demolition guidelines. The first focus is this piece. However, the three stream separation will apply to all businesses in the community, which includes construction companies. So they will be.
I thought we did opt the mix.
So we opted the mix ways that those six homes would.
Did we do enough, that's another question, but.
Exactly. And we also are doing a separation at the landfill. So council included extra budget to ensure that, so those loads that are coming, we have Carneys, who's our contractor, is separating out wood that can be ground up and go to Port Millanist and use as energy. So we've kind of.
They're all shaped pretty blind. There's nothing to pick up, it's just too ordinary.
Okay.
All right. So this is coming back to us in June, July?
July, we have it, but timeline is a good discussion.
Yeah, and so, I mean, you don't need any from us at this point?
Just, just a discussion. The, the proposed resolution was just basically to, to accept this and, and provide any feedback prior to agreeing on it to start engaging the public.
We already provided feedback. I, I'm not sure you need a motion to us to continue. We'll see this. But I do think we're going to want different options in terms of enforcement scheduling. And some of the other feedback.
And quick wins.
Thank you. I mean, we can say that, we can say. I'll move that we received, like by council race, all those in favor. Thank you. I'm going to move up the advisory design panel discussion.
Do you want to open the special?
You know what? I'll just open the special meeting. You're going to recess, depending on their committee alone. And I'm going to open the special meeting and ask for a motion to adopt the agenda with the inclusion of great beginning of closed.
Close for a while.
For a while. It was, uh, for a while. Moved by council race, settled by council, all in favor, opposed motion carries. I'm going to recess the special business meeting and we're going to go back in, we don't hold. We're going to move up item four till now. And then we'll do these progress.
Thank you. What would you like to do?
Okay, so, yeah, okay. I'll, I'll handle this. So council inquiry is, council's representative on A D P. And he brought up some issues at, at the last meeting with regard to, particularly with regard to waterfut landing. But it brought up questions about timing for A D P. And I think it brought some questions about the role of council member at A D P as well. But also I think discussion about some, because we did have a conversation, a committee about waterfut landing and then need to be commented. So I think we want to make sure that we're clear in terms of some of the direction. And did everyone have a chance to watch the video? We can't, we actually can put it up there, but if everyone had watched it, then we wouldn't necessarily need to. But it's quite long, like the whole conversation is, I watched the whole thing, is 30 minutes, 35, 40 minutes. So I've, I've had a little bit of a hard time just pulling up three or four minutes here and there of the context of the whole thing.
So maybe if we can just maybe talk about timing first.
Yeah, please.
The, it was just a timing issue. We, we were juggling dates and so it just happened so that there was a council meeting we were locked into and then we went to A D P right after that. But I think there is value in going to council first on a big proposal like this to get the general indication of where, of whether the bylaw should proceed or not, and then taking it to A D P for refining it. Because there's, there could be significant changes that happen between first and second meeting.
Yeah, and I think, I think there's, so we, we did have a committee and then it came to the first reading. And I think that's the timing thing is, is that committee then goes to A D P? Because I think all these big ones, the A D P does provide a good broad-based input on these big development proposals like that, they're input on this. But is it right to do that after first reading? I mean, there's going to be changes anyway after first reading, I know. But, you know, the debate for me is, is A D P before first reading or after? I kind of tend to leave it before first reading. And I'd like to get other feedback.
Yeah, I would agree. I appreciate the A D P's input and some of the comments they brought up were things that I didn't, you know, that I would have appreciated in front of mine so I could have a different perspective on before it came for first reading. But I also don't mind, you know, first reading is sort of an innovation. I don't mind it now either. It does give you, there's still opportunity to change. You're not set in stone in first reading. So I would be happy either way to go with council's wishes on that. But the more, on that big land use decision, the more times we can get feedback from professionals, I think the better. So maybe it was twice.
Well, I think some of these big ones do definitely go to A D P more than that.
Well, the next meeting also that A D P had was after the council when we talked about Cleveland Avenue. And the streetscape council saw the nice presentation on Tuesday and the A D P saw it again after that on Thursday. And that one also, which is very important, we all agree, we're having trouble with downtown neighborhood plants in Cleveland Avenue and trying to get our head around height. Then it goes to A D P and I watched the participate, I mean, I'm there mostly to watch, but participate in the meeting. And they say stuff that we didn't, like, none of us came up with some of those ideas that they came up with. And so, you know, that was another one also that I felt like we should all watch as a council. You know, you say, hopefully council watched the A D P, but I don't know. Did you watch it, Susan? Did you watch it, Doug? Did you watch it, Jason? You know, and so even in the minutes, you know, and I laugh because one of our climbers, and it's one of her kind of real traits, she goes, when someone asks a question, she says something like, it's, it's in the minutes, but here's the answer. And so, so, I mean, I get that when I ask a question and I hear her say that, then I go, obviously I didn't read the minutes good enough because I asked a question and the climbers asked me, it's in the minutes, but here's the answer. Well, we are, like, well, I speak for myself when I say I, I don't necessarily read word for word everything. I skip through a lot of stuff thinking I'm smart. And so the A D P comes along and I saw this one on waterfut landing and I really felt after watching that one that there was a lot of things that we missed and that it's really important for council to hear. And so I wanted to have it so that we could watch it. I know the whole meeting's 35 minutes on that particular development, maybe 45 minutes. There's a segment in there at 72 minutes in that's a fairly aggressive one. Anyway, so all the things were said and, and so Lauren Siegel had sent me an email. I think he had every council. I think he had every council inviting us to a due, right? And so I declined to go into the due because it's on a council day. But I said to Lauren in that letter, "You should watch the ADP meeting." Well, we get a response, obviously someone read it, because we got a letter from them. And we have their spokespeople up here today. And so, I mean, I wouldn't mind hearing what they have to say, because I know they watched it. I wouldn't mind hearing what they have to say and how it affected the development if it had. And then, then they comment after what they say.
And I think one of the reasons why I wanted to get some of, a council member appointed to ADP was to be able to bring these types of things forward to committee or to council. So I value that, I mean, that's important. So we do rely on our ADP member, which is currently due, to basically say, "Watch this segment. This was really interesting, provide us with that information." That's your role as the liaison. Your role as the liaison too is to also reflect council's comments in your participation at ADP, if they're appropriate, and to listen and bring back feedback. So that's the role of the person from council. It's not necessarily the role of the council member to sit there and advocate their particular issues on a development.
Well, I don't have a key motion.
No, it's okay if you're saying, if you're clarifying or you're articulating what council's general conversation was. Council actually supported what was said about more employment plans, for example. Council was looking for more mixed housing like this or something. So that's your role as, or any one of ours' roles, if you're a member of council. But bringing these issues forward, I mean, especially on these big developments, we've kind of got one crack at making this great. And high-profile ones, and this was articulated in the meeting, high-profile ones like waterflood landing is a huge opportunity to make something great down on our waterfront. So I think we all... That was my last quote, was to ever be prepared to Mr. Trump. However, moving on. So I mean, I think, and what, I mean, there were certain things articulated in that ADP meeting that I think supported, but in a more articulate fashion, what council was saying at our meeting with regard to commercial space, with regard to ghettoizing, making all the affordable housing in one area. That was a really good comment by the ADP, and was reflective again in the conversation with the Polydome Development Group. There was a whole bunch of really good pieces. So maybe, I think this is sort of leading up where the council inquiry just asked of Jonas, how are those things being incorporated into waterflood landing piece? So we will go there to Susan and Jonas, and if they want to contribute more to that, we'll prepare that.
Yes, and Susan has prepared a few slides in terms of what's, we've had some good feedback from the ADP. We always look at it through, you know, we will bring the council the feedback that we hear from the ADP, but we also have to look at it, you know, what does the employment strategy say? What does the district of OCP says about growth management? So ADP is an important piece in that puzzle, but it's not the only piece. So we've taken their feedback, and we've gone to the applicants, and there's changes that are happening on the plan that will, I think, be of benefit to this development and to downtown. So Susan's got a few slides on what's changing.
Just a couple. You know, I guess, you know, the ADP meeting was definitely really a bit of a challenge. It was a very hard-hitting ADP meeting, considering how far along we were with the project, you know? There'd been a couple of sessions with council and public meetings and well-received. Councilor Chappala has been pushing consistently for more commercial, and we've incrementally been getting more. But the ADP definitely, you know, took this to another level. But I just wanted to recap what we start with when we get a big project like this. And we start with the OCP. And the OCP definition of the downtown is looking to significantly revitalize the downtown and waterfront areas through mixed-use residential, employment, commercial, and institutional development. You know, that is the basic policy that we've been working with and the applicants have been working with from the start. The ADP comments were really to wanting to visualize something great, something like Granville Island, something far beyond what had been presented to us in this development application. So it was a bit hard to kind of reconcile what to do with that. However, the developers... Technology glitz here all the time. The developers definitely heard the message. And I just wanted to recap, this is what's in place today. This is the waterfront landing neighborhood plan. And it has a teeny little bit of commercial here, that's it. And it's got an area designated for marine industrial, light marine industrial use. But I guess one of the things I wanted to mention is none of that is secured. There's nothing in the zoning, nothing in the land development agreement that's actually a commitment to that small bit of, bit of commercial. So here we are with waterfront landing. This is the bylaw, the land use plan that was given first reading by council. And this was after us pushing the developers behind the scenes. There were quite a bit of back-and-forth meetings to get more commercial. We certainly heard that message. So what they committed to at first reading was fifty thousand square feet of commercial divided into two areas. And the affordable housing, yes, it is in one building. That's not the only use in that building, but it is in one location. And I guess that's something that's new to me, that council wants to see that dispersed. And I don't quite know what that's going to look like, or what it's going to mean for getting that affordable housing early in the development program. Anyway, the fifty thousand square feet started out as ten. They had a study done that encouraged them to go to thirty-five. So eventually we got to fifty, and that's what was given first reading. So after hearing from the ADP, we sat with them again and said, "Look, you know, there were some very hard-hitting comments, there has to be more. What more can you do here?" So the project has come back with the entire village here expanded quite a bit. It's almost doubled in size. What was townhomes down toward the South Park is now an apartment. So the waterfront consists of park, commercial use, multifamily, and in policy, it doesn't, it may not look like this river, but there is a policy revision to require additional commercial adjacent to the park. So I think that goes further to what we heard from the ADP. It doesn't turn it into Granville Island, which was one of the suggestions. And I guess, you know, the challenge with that is Granville Island has twelve million visitors a year. You know, it's a whole different program, a whole different population base that it serves. So the other changes that were made are along this hillside. There are additional apartments here and an additional apartment here in this mixed-use area. The Laurelwood commercial area now runs right to the waterfront, so it's essentially doubled in size. And it has that important provision of having commercial right on the waterfront. Maybe it's a restaurant, who knows, an ice cream shop, I don't know what it will be. Councilor Pryor raised a really good point in the ADP meeting about this being the sheltered part of the waterway. And we had not previously given, made any provision for parking. It's pretty easy to put parking on this public road or just off the public road. But in the new revision to this plan, we've actually put policy and put a couple of asterisks on the map that at development permit stage, there will be public parking here, because this is actually a strata road that runs down to serve the, serve the Laurelwood commercial multifamily. So that's an important thing to have, and that was something that, you know, a lot of the problems we've been wrestling with is this is a concept plan. It's zoning and it's a land use designation. We don't have any actual buildings in front of us. But we have added additional policies to the OCP, both in, you know, the sub-area plan, both in the policy and the design guidelines, reinforcing the need for each of these neighborhoods to have a distinct character, to avoid repetitive building forms. And a lot of that really is not going to be in front of you until the DP stage. You know, this is the stage we're at, which is establishing that basic program of land use. So in policy, the way we've written this up is this is the land use schedule, but fifty thousand square feet of commercial is now expressed as a minimum. It may be double that, but in the policy and in the land development agreement, fifty thousand now becomes the minimum, whereas before it was the ceiling. So we believe this is a significant change. It does not turn it into Granville Island. And I haven't yet figured out how to look at distributing those affordable housing units into different parts of the site and still get them built in your first or second phase. And the other major change, which doesn't show on this map, it shows on the phasing plan, which I haven't included, is they have brought the pedestrian bridge to phase two. They figured out a way to construct this road and go safely around parts of the site. And I think that was really the hesitation, was both in landing it somewhere safely and making sure people who walk through here, and especially people in Ballcliff who might come down and go to the downtown this way, that there was a safe way to travel through the site. So they now have found a way to do that in phase two. So again, that's a big step forward is bringing that into phase two. It was in phase four under the previous version. So that, I think, is what Bosa has been prepared to change. And I guess, you know, that's why we're here for discussion, is to see whether we should be moving forward to second reading on the revised plan, where are we going?
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate the theme to, you know, make the project, you know, different. But I also understand why, you know, a Granville Island-style development would probably not be perfect for the city. We need to keep in mind as well that if we want to maintain our downtown first as the primary gateway and visit hub in our town, we can't have that activity drawn away to other sites, whether it be this one or others. So I, I think this, this plan makes sense. And, you know, as I said at the last council meeting when this came up, you know, I used to be a member of the advisory design panel before I was on council, and my understanding was that, you know, advisory design panel, you know, it should really be focused on design. You start talking about land use decisions, I mean, that's a council prerogative. And, you know, if they want to provide some feedback, that's okay, general feedback. But I can understand why an applicant would be very concerned that very late in a process, all of a sudden things are being held up because, you know, old fee members of, unlisted members of the design panel are, you know, making that kind of comment. So I just think we have to be careful about, you know, how we receive that feedback. And maybe it is a timing issue. Maybe we do need to have the meetings earlier on in the stage so that there is better chance for council members to consider that feedback from the ADP and then talk with the applicant when they come around for, for that type of thing. So, you know, I really think that at this stage, you know, I'm, like I said before, I don't have any major issues with this development as this town. And I think it would be really pretty efficient to, you know, to argue that.
Oh, thank you. So I feel much the same way. And changes, I mean, I liked before. And the changes, I guess, to me are just that much better. I thought the reason for the discussion frankly was the question of the mandate of the ADP and the timing. And as far as the timing goes, I think as long as we get their comments before at least second reading. First reading is pretty cursory, it's not first, at least for me, it's not, it's not sort of the detail thing. And so if the ADP is able to give us comments before second reading, which is what I think we want to tie the thing together for a public hearing, then I think for me that's fine. I don't personally see this happening on every application that goes to the ADP. I think this is something that's primarily for larger projects, or something like the downtown massing study, you know, which is a very significant project. And I take Jason's point about the mandate. I think generally speaking, you know, we're all laypeople when it comes to something like this. Not you guys, but us guys. And so for me, you know, anybody's information, an educated person's information or comment on something can be helpful. And it is important how we receive it. I mean, their comments that, you know, this shouldn't be like a Granville Island, to me overlooks the fact that we already have a motion front, which has already been described that way. And so now we're talking about competing with the ocean front rather than complementing it. And does it compete or complement existing downtown? And so those are council decisions, you know, happy to have their viewpoint, but they are fundamentally council decisions. And so I think it's important that we understand and they understand. You know, if they've got some helpful comments, that's fine, but ultimately it's our decision on those types of things.
Thank you. You know, my concern is that we talk about downtown like it's separate. This is downtown. This is a part of our downtown, it's designated as downtown. And we continue to build residences and approve residences and approve townhouse projects in the absence of workspace. And I get to this point constantly, and we get dribblings. If you want to look at what fifty thousand square foot looks like, our four-floor cornerstone building is thirty thousand square feet of workspace. So basically just dropping in another cornerstone building, maybe one more floor, but spreading it over down, down ground floor retail space, you're changing the taxation rate for businesses because you're adding ground floor retail space into residential units, which is a very big deficit for businesses to actually be able to operate from. It changes the, it changes your taxation rate, makes it do what they call the shopper's drive-by effect. So I appreciate that they added a little bit more, but really, employment land should be integrated into your community. And when you designate somewhere as downtown, it should not just be residences with token employment space. And you're not competing. You're building a community for a hundred years, these buildings are going to be around forever. If you don't build employment space, you don't get employment. And this community is suffering. We're at three years wait time for a single retail space right now. Three years before we get one place to put in a medium-sized business. That should affect all of us. You wonder why we're creating like just townhouses and places. We're just creating a commuting community. We're not even creating retail space where people can open shops to service our community. So some of our land use changes have been good. And you can see how developers are struggling with our parking issues, with building second floor office space that we've required in our downtown. But now we're in, we've also stunted that discussion by having these, by bringing the first reading not densifying Cleveland Avenue. So then there is more... Well, there's more, you know, without having other places to work. If you're going to just build downtown as residences with ground floor retail space, this is an opportunity for integrated space. And no, it's... I really like the ADP comment on oceanfront integration with, like, how when you're walking along the oceanfront, you don't want to be looking into people's houses. You want to be able to go shopping and walk along an oceanfront and have that feeling of public space, not private space that you're walking through, but having some integration with the oceanfront. I don't mind the center being residences at all, but the waterfront walkway should not be just designated as, here's your shopping space, here's your commercial space, but integrate it along the waterfront and actually make it interesting. Don't just have it be that you're walking along and, I mean, it'll be interesting at night, you can walk along and look into people's windows, but, you know, actually having an interface with commercial space would be amazing.
Susan, do you mind just clarifying how, what it's changed to?
Well, you will be walking along your waterfront, all of this park is public space. And in the detailed plans, there's a walkway all the way along there, as well as other park areas. You move into here, and this is all a plaza design with boardwalks. You're not looking in anybody's living rooms anywhere along the first two-thirds of the site. I guess the only place where that might happen is in this last building. And that's a design issue. And that's a design issue, I agree. You know, there is waterfront walkway all the way along here, again, looping around the whole site, actually, but on the waterfront specifically. This is designed with a wide promenade-type boardwalk so that when you come across the bridge, you're in a very public space. And the design guidelines are all oriented to that. The doors and windows are to open, seating areas, all of that stuff is in the design guidelines. And luckily, flood control setbacks also moved these buildings back. So I actually think we've got a really good program where you're not looking into people's windows. And just back to the comments.
There's no RM2 along the waterfront?
There's no one?
RM2?
No, this is an apartment building which takes you up, and there's a minimum amount of commercial we're establishing. But, you know, if there's a demand for more commercial, I believe they'll be building it, you know?
In the right area. Is there, is it comprehensive buildings or is it just the, like, commercial space?
The way they're envisioning it right now is there's, they want to have a low-profile building with two stories when you first come across the, the walkway. And then as you move down, they go up to four-story buildings along here, and then along Laurelwood, there's six stories. So along Laurelwood, we're not expecting ground floor retail with residential above. We're expecting ground floor retail, then office, and then additional residential above that. But all the waterfront, they're trying to keep, you know, it's a balance. They're trying to duel up and also keep the scale human and attractive. So right where the bridge lands, it's two, and then it broadens out to four stories. And back here, this little strip of red, are townhouses designated for live work, which was a feature of the previous plan, live work going beyond what's permitted as a whole-occupation. So again, kind of looking at professional offices, that type of thing, but in a townhouse structure, you can live above, but primarily office on the main floor.
And so it's main floor, second floor, office space, and then residences?
Yes.
Or fourth, or not saying, second could be fourth floor.
It could. Again, all of that needs to be worked out at the development permit stage, exactly how these work and look. But we're providing the policy to support it happening. And yeah, it may well be that, you know, if the demand is there, the commercial mix went down. But at this point, we're showing it as a minimum percentage of that parcel shall be commercial. So to get it right at the end, to support the park use.
Well, great comments. I mean, the whole idea I thought was so that we could watch a little bit of the meeting. I wanted, you know, as a representative on the ADP, I wanted to just give council an idea of what we're missing.
And if we had time, we could do what we don't have.
I know, I know, we don't have time. I realize that, unfortunately so, because the whole idea, the point I was trying to get across, I have to try and do it verbally and sort of do that, but.
Well, hopefully all of council will go and watch.
Well, hopefully, and that'd be great. If council would have committed watching it, then that'd be perfect. And actually, another one to watch is the one we did on Cleveland Avenue Streetscape Heights, because that's equally as important to the town. And there was equally as many ideas coming out of that one. So to council raise this point a little bit there on the ADP, you know, and I agree 100%. If you have the smart people that are coming up, sitting on this group to give us advice, you know, we should listen, you know? And I know we get the minutes, and I know everybody reads them, but it doesn't necessarily, the minutes don't necessarily serve anything, like I said.
You made that point already, Ted, keep going.
All right. And so I just heard you say they sped up the bridge crossing to the first phase?
To phase two. It's, can't be done in the first phase practically, but by phase two.
So when we were discussing that, some really smart person in the group said, why don't you build the phase coming for the downtown?
That was you, Ted.
Anyway, I mean, truthfully, why don't we get that pier coming out from the downtown side out to show good faith? Like I said before, the Kingswood development that we were promised a bridge six years ago, we never bought a bridge.
It's an interesting question. Can you, in phase one, the piece coming off of downtown, once phase two comes in, you connect it?
Absolutely.
And might be a logistical, it's just something to think about? And the developer can come up with it?
Yeah. And that, you know, because not only would that make downtown, you know, be re-income true to have a pier where people could actually throw a line off and look at this beautiful development this coming in and go, you know, when this bridge opens, I'm buying this over there.
Could I direct that to the applicants who are here? They have.
That'd be great.
Well, I mean, they don't have to answer it now. While they're watching the ADP meeting, so they saw council prior make that suggestion, that really smart person, as we expect. But we really have to move on, so keep going.
Unfortunately. Anyway, and then the last stage is, well, I was going to talk about looking in living rooms, but I guess obviously I'll leave that one alone.
Well, we don't have any living rooms they're going to be able to look in anymore.
Yeah.
It's always amazing, walking at nighttime, and people have these big truck rooms.
I like the development before it went to ADP. I'm looking forward to seeing second reading. I think, you know, in some cases, it will make sense to go to ADP right after committee and before we have a reading. And in other cases, it makes sense to put it between first and second. I, you know, the thing for me, and I appreciate Ted bringing his concerns to the table, but the ADP is just one element on which we base our decisions. And, you know, we have to look at all of our other plans and feedback from the public and the OCP and other developments that are ongoing in the context. So we work within a greater context. And so this is just, ADP is one piece of feedback. And I actually, like Patty said, think that we gave a lot of the same feedback, maybe not quite in eloquent terms or technical terms, as was captured in the letter we got from those properties. So I'm not going to say anything more about what they've changed. I would want to see that inside a full report from staff, and I'll go back and watch the ADP video as part of that.
That'd be great.
So just really quickly, I used to sit on ADP my first time on council. And we did pretty big projects. In fact, we brought this waterfront landing, which is currently disowning, to the ADP quite early on in the process and way before first reading. And I think that's really a valuable piece to it. We're not a large municipality like the city of Vancouver that has architects and has like whole teams of people inputting into development. We're a pretty small planning department that doesn't fit every single area of expertise up there. So from my point of view, the ADP is a little bit different in our community compared to some other places, because we do kind of use them or can use them as a bit of a repository for covering our bases when we don't have our bases. And that is particularly in architectural form. And so I do value it. And these big projects, I really do think need to go to ADP before we see first reading. They may go back after first reading, depending on how much comment. ADP, as I said, reflected, I think, a lot of the things that council's been talking about in terms of more commercial, more integrated space, making sure the waterfront, any access along the waterfront is 100% public, not looking into, we talked about all these things. So I'm really glad to see the changes reflected. I would like to, you know, this has come up many times now about, we're going to build an apartment, and we're going to put affordable housing in that apartment building. We really want to see some integration. I would love to see developers making partnerships with PC Housing right off the bat and say, we're going to work with PC Housing, they're going to fund this too, you know? And we're going to be able to put more affordable housing in some of these, it might be CMHC, it might be, there's a whole bunch of funding mechanisms that I think the development community is sort of underutilizing in order to help us deliver affordable housing in the community. So I'd like to see those things integrated into these developments more. I'm getting locked off, sorry. Anyway, I really do see the ADP as a resource for us. We don't have the expertise within our own facility here. So I do see them as a resource, a little bit different than some of the large municipalities with more robust planning department schedules. And I appreciate council prior bringing it forward. I would like council prior to make sure he's articulating council's comments at the ADP a little bit more, just as my observation of watching the meeting.
Give more council comments?
If, we already had a session on this, so it would have been nice for you to say, council talked about these things too, and reflecting council's commentary to the ADP as well, not just your own. So, and that's, and that's anyone who'd be on ADP, that would be your role. Your role isn't there to necessarily specifically drive home your issues, but council's issues, and then bring back information to council that we, that is important for us to know and hear. Are we good on that?
Yes, so just, I guess, to confirm, we are coming back for a second reading in a few weeks.
Okay. Okay. Awesome.
Just last one, and then can we ask, council could watch the meeting on Cleveland Avenue?
Absolutely, that's a great suggestion. I haven't watched that one yet, but I will, and just make sure staff can email out the link and then.
Sure.
It's nicely broken down within the video, so you can go right to the specific conversation. So it's easy to navigate. Thank you.
And we will bring.
Did you want to add anything or?
No, just thanks for the discussion.
Great. Thank you for being here.
You got a lot of busy, didn't you?
Here is I want to.
Well, I don't think our goal is trouble, we're just trying to make it break down.
Yes. And every project, you know, comes out of better project when it goes into ADP in terms of design.
Yeah. Awesome, thank you. So on the last note, Jonas, there's one more item with regard to, we got a letter from Mr., oh my gosh.
MacDoodles?
Well, MacDoodles, like MacDoodle Doodles, son-in-law, who's running the farm.
It's the.
Yeah. Talking about, they have slashed piles, agricultural lands, our government general and provincial regulations regulate burning, they're sort of fighting up against our policies that currently don't allow burning for general purpose burning in the community or clearing in the community. So he's, and I'm not sure how we reconcile this, because, you know, council's policy direction has been we want to encourage agriculture. It's pretty exciting to actually have a farm going on our agricultural land reserve lands. But they're kind of fighting up against our policies, which make it challenging for our cost when we do, from a farming point.
Yes.
So what are our options there?
So in terms of the AALR or ALC, the, in some ways, the ALC supersedes, or the ALC regulation supersedes local government, not when it comes to open burn. So the ALC has basically said whatever the local regulations are when it comes to burning, because it's a public health and fire issue. And really, I'm going to turn it over to our fire department and Jeff.
Yeah, but, yes, keep going.
No, right there, just like that.
I like that going on, you want.
Okay, no. So those don't require a department, fire permit. And so, yeah, our burning bylaws permit larger, anything bigger than a campfire by permit from a provincial body only right now. And so that's normally ministry enforced, and that's for agriculture, not agricultural, but forestry purposes. If we wanted to make an alteration to that, certainly something we could accommodate, it'd be pretty, I mean, from our point of view, it'd be quite involved to allow something burning that big for us to pleasing it, permitting it ahead of time, being out there, responding to burn complaints, that type of thing. But we could certainly do it and build the cost into a permit.
So current, let me just, I just have to get this question. Currently, if there was a forestry in the community that wanted to burn, they could do it regardless of our, in forestry, regardless of our bylaws, through provincial agency?
Yeah, that's the way our bylaw is certainly is written currently, yes.
With regard to forestry, but not with regard to agriculture?
Not with, well, if they were able to get a provincial permit, they are. That, we basically defer to the provincial body. And the reason we do that is because of the time involved, and we are also looking at some risk here, not taking on the risk within the fire department. We don't necessarily have class-two, rank-two, or class-two, class-three burn experience, and that's what they do for a living. So we're giving that to them, the people who have that experience. We could do it. There'd be a lot of work involved in our side. And then the issue that we look at too is smoke generation, which would be significant more than their backyard burns, that type of thing as well.
And we brought the burning, new burning bylaws in about four, five years ago? No, less. Three to four? They apparently recently changed, yeah. And so that's forestry. Can agriculture do the same and go to a provincial body and get a certificate or whatever permission to the provincial body?
From what I, I'm not an agricultural specialist, but I don't see, from the limited look I've done at this, it doesn't look like there is. It looks like it defers to local government.
Yeah, Chris?
Chris, looking at Director of Engineering, if I could just speak to the Ministry of Environment requirements around open burning for agriculture, a piece of the puzzle. The, some parts of, sorry, backing up. First of all, there is a ministry regulation on open burning, smoke control regulation. And provincially, and it specifies that local bylaws need adhere to as part of this. Provincially, you can burn under a series of requirements. One of the more important ones for sort of within our boundaries would be more than 100 meters from a neighboring residence or business, and more than 500 meters from a hospital, continuing care facility, or school that is in session. So that might cut out a lot of these sort of micro-agriculture sort of situations that we're discussing here today. The, you can, if you want to go outside of this regulation, you would then need a provincial permit, which would then, I think, trigger our bylaw.
Yes.
So I think that sort of holds together. Specifically for agriculture residues, there are those some that are exempt from this regulation, and that's.
This regulation is?
From, from the open burning.
Our bylaw?
It's smoke.
No, the open burning, smoke control regulation, provincial regulation. The things that are exempt are some agricultural materials, weeds, crops, stubble, weeds, foliage. So that's sort of during operation. I think the questions that are coming before council are more around clearing. And so very specifically, pile burning of removed trees and debris from agricultural development do need to follow this regulation? And so do need to be outside of those various regi from other users, or else they would need a permit. If they need a permit, then they would get a provincial permit, and that provincial permit would allow our bylaw to provide a district permit for burning.
That fair enough?
Easy, right?
So they need to make application to the provincial government? If they get a provincial permit, then they can come and say, we have a provincial permit, and we could, in theory, waive our need for a permit?
Yes, or we could permit.
Or we could commit, okay.
And there is fees built into that in our bylaw, council authority.
Karen? So this would be a place where the Food Policy Council is trying to help local farmers, and they certainly made contacts with the province. And I'm wondering if they can help facilitate this for this farmer. So rather than just saying, go get a permit, I think this is where the Food Policy Council wants to help, if they can, to help the farmer go through that process, provide contacts. And so we're not just sending this back to this landowner, saying, good luck with that. I think we want to make sure that they're in touch with our Food Policy Council, who have contacts in the Ministry of Agriculture, possibly the Ministry of the Environment, to just work with them so that it's an easier road. It's not easy dealing with bureaucracy.
So there's a path for this farmer?
There may be, again, I'm not familiar with the agricultural path. If this is something we want to look at, we could certainly change, you know, the bylaw to accommodate this. And again, that's not a huge, insurmountable hurdle. And then we could do it safely, certainly from the fire department, I have no worries. We'd be taking on a lot of work, but we could build that in on permit pricing. Yeah, the only concern would be the smoke that would be issuing from the burns. We do a lot of door-to-door on the weekend. We do a lot of door to door on the weekend, burn complaints too little, foot by foot fires, it'd be tough to tell him to put it out when two doors down, we have a considerable size fire that would create an issue.
And it's a summer camp that's supposed to go into session next door. So, Jeff?
Thanks, Mayor. So I think just building on some of the things that Bill has said and that Aaron and I have talked about outside of council was for council to, I think, have a wholesome report that considers all of the aspects. And Bill started to address some of those about the, the health concerns and, and those aspects because if, if a fire is permitted on agricultural land reserve or agricultural land and it's adjacent or they receive a permit or it's outside of the radii that Chris talked about, the, the health effects can still be the same and certainly, you know, I have zero expertise in that area.
This is why we changed the bylaw to begin with.
Yeah, that's my understanding. So my recommendation or staff's recommendation at this point is that, that staff bring back a wholesome report to council covering all of the issues along with how things can progress, you know, like Chris talked about, like Bill talked about, so, so that it's not necessarily just a known or as, as you mentioned, Councilor Elliott, you know, just passing somebody off to another bureaucracy, that we could provide council a wholesome report on the whole issue.
Jason?
Yeah, I have to say that I'm really not supportive of burning in our, in our municipality in the, the sort of contiguous urbanized area. I'm just wondering if, is there something else that we could do in terms of making an alternative feasible for them? So for example, could we offer free disposal, you know, in a weird waste of place or, you know, depending on what type of material it is, try and facilitate that rather than putting a bunch of resources into developing some permitting system that probably is only going to be for one piece of land? Could we, you know, think about something else? I, I'd really like to see anything other than this, but I just think for, because of the nature of our geography, I'm really concerned about having the, the smoke.
And I'm glad you brought that up because I think, I mean, chipping is an alternative, but it's quite expensive. Disposal is an alternative, but it's challenging for space expense. So if we can figure out a system whereby achieving the same result and making sure we're not throwing up hindrances to the farming in our community, then I think that's what we're looking for in the report that is, is options along those lines. Thanks, Jason. Ted?
Yeah, well, just, I, I mean, if they are going to burn, I guess we'd get them to put lots of fans around it and heat it up. Is that to be part of the permit?
I, not something I'd consider. We're not normally doing that with swatch file burns as I understand it, but what we do look for are good venting days. And in fact, the British Columbia Smoke Control Regulation requires that if you are going to do it, it would have to be a good venting day. So where the smoke is going up into the atmosphere is both is sitting in.
We used to burn all the time and fans were all part of it.
Right.
You'd get the thing a lot hotter and then the substance would straight up instead of, you know?
So, so we'll get a report.
I'm surprised that it's not part of it anymore.
There, there are guidelines to make sure that those things are, are happening. So we'll get a report out. Jeff?
Sure. Awesome. Thank you. Okay, that's our point of the whole meeting. Thank you very much, everybody. I'll call, I'll bring the meeting to an end. Terminated. We have a special meeting. Maybe I'll just entertain a motion closed moved by Council Ray. Seconded. Oh, motion terminated. Council Ray is seconded by Council Prior, all in favor. Close, motion carries.